All right. Welcome to the joint hearing of the Education and Public Safety Committees. This committee is focused on school safety and crisis response. I am Councilman Zeke Cohen. I’m chairman of the Education and Youth Committee, and I represent the first district. To my left is Councilman Brandon Scott, chairman of the Public Safety Committee. To his left is Councilman Chris Burnett, member of the Education and Youth Committee. And to his left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, member of the Education Youth Committee. To her left, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, member of the Education Youth Committee. Joining us today, from the ex officio city council president’s office, Mr. Matthew Peters. From the school board, Ms. Linda Chaneyah. We have, from City Schools, Chief Davis. Also, from City Schools, School Police, we have Chief Hamm. Thank you for being with us. From the Mayor’s Office of Criminal Justice, we have Ganesha Martin. From the Health Department, Dr. Jorisah. From the Baltimore City Police Department, Melvin Russell. And who else we got? Colonel Warley. And I believe that is, oh, from the ex officio mayor’s office, Mr. Jeffrey Amros. Not a problem. All right. So, today’s hearing is the first in a series focused on student safety. We know that kids in disinvested neighborhoods throughout Baltimore are exposed and overexposed to violence. We know that trauma can negatively impact not only academic outcomes, but also can have lifelong impacts, according to the American Psychological Association. When childhood trauma is not resolved, a sense of fear and even hopelessness often carries into adulthood. We know that unfortunately, too many of our kids in the city of Baltimore do not receive the mental health and health services that they need. And so, the purpose of this series of hearings is to address both the immediate crisis of violence impacting our kids, and also to go a bit deeper and have a comprehensive response, including all agencies. Unfortunately, there have been several somewhat high-profile incidents of violence impacting our kids recently. On February 9th, there was a shooting at Frederick Douglass High School, where a staff member was shot by an adult visitor. In March, there were two stabbings that took place in or near schools, one outside of City College, and one at Patterson High. In the past two weeks, there was a mass shooting of four people near Hollibird and Graceland Park Elementary Middle Schools. This shooting occurred on a playground while both schools were being dismissed. And there was also a recent shooting near Green Street Academy in southwest Baltimore. As a city, we have an obligation to support the well-being of our kids. This hearing is not about blaming any single agency. We clearly need an all-hand-on-deck approach. Tonight, we’re going to begin by hearing from some of the students. We’re then going to hear from our city agencies, and we will then have public comment. Additionally, in the spirit of increasing the ways in which public can participate in this hearing, we’re going to try something new tonight. For everyone in the council chambers and everyone watching remotely, you can use your mobile device to submit questions and make comments related to the topic of youth safety. You’ll be able to do this during and after agency testimony. We plan to project your questions and comments on the screen. There will also be an opportunity for traditional public comment later on, at the end of the hearing. Only council members can ask questions of agencies, which is why we hope to have some of the audience questions up on the screen, and then we can ask them. To participate, visit the link displayed on the screen. It’s also on the slips of paper around the room to submit your questions and comments. And the link is case-sensitive. The projected feed will be moderated. Please keep questions respectful and relevant to the topic of student safety. Before having some of the young people from Frederick Douglass High School come start us off, I want to turn it over to co-chair, Councilman Brandon Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. The most important thing that any government can do is to keep its citizens safe, and we know that the safety of our young people is the most important thing facing the city of Baltimore right now. Today, what we’re going to try to do is try to figure out how to empower all the agencies to have all the resources that they need, help them coordinate with each other, so that we can keep our young people safe at all times, at all hours, no matter whether the school’s in or out throughout the city of Baltimore. I look forward to hearing from the young people today about how they think we should do so, but also from the agencies about how you all can work together to make sure that our young people are safer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. We are now going to hear directly from some of the students, as well as a teacher from Frederick Douglass High School. If you all could just come right on up. And if you would, just state your name and speak directly into the microphone.
Hello, my name is Damani Thomas.
Hello, my name is Jayana Santos.
Hello, my name is Breonna Harris.
Thank you so much for being with us. Please feel free to take it away.
Okay. Hello, how are you doing this evening? My name is Damani Thomas, and I’m in the 11th grade in I-10 Frederick Douglass High School. My goal for today is to help you understand the loss of opportunities and violence that the youth must endure every day in Baltimore City. Okay. Some of you were born in Baltimore and know how hard it is to make a name for yourself and be successful. But for the ones that don’t, you have to understand that it’s an everyday struggle to even get out of bed in the morning. For kids like me, we only have one chance to make a good impression, and sometimes that’s the hardest part, because we never had the training to appeal to a certain group or a particular person. No matter how hard we try to be great or do things on our own, we’re always going to need to be taught something to have a brighter future. With that being said, I think there is five things that we can change for the students to have a brighter future we truly deserve. Number one, the subjects that the teachers teach students are designed to set us up for tests and not life. Yes, it is true that tests can give us a different avenue for our future and possibly another perspective on life, but what about the ones that don’t plan on furthering their education? In my algebra class, I’m learning about waves, and sometimes I wonder what value I would have if I worked at McDonald’s or Burger King. Now, maybe if I wanted to be a scientist later on, it would work. But, most kids don’t think two to three years from now. We aren’t doing a very good job advertising the value of this kind of learning to kids in the city, who must be focused on making money right now, not on some possible future. Number two, what we need to be focusing on is the motivation that the students have on an everyday basis. What kids really want is for someone important or a mass crowd to notice their accomplishments and praise them to the fullest extent, but somehow and some way, they always get faulted with no general explanation. This is why certain kids turn to the streets and head down a more violent path, because they think they will have a better chance of getting noticed. We would be more motivated if we had more black teachers who came from where we come from, trying to motivate us in every way possible. We would be more successful if we actually connected teens with people who look more like them. Number three, what we can do right now for the younger generation is have more business-savvy field trips or lectures with very important people. Our teachers and our principal know a lot of people who claim they want to help the youth, but are nowhere to be found unless there is a tragedy. In the real world, we need to know how to carry ourselves whenever we’re at an event that benefits us or our peers. Imagine one of your kids applying for a job and not using any life lessons that you taught them, such as professional skills, that will need for networking, interviewing, and succeeding in their careers. Many students are graduating with no prospects of a good job, and this leaves them with no alternative than turning to the streets. Number four, another important thing we really need to do is invest more in the students than the school itself. When you put more into the building, that promotes false advertising, because the students aren’t learning anything and investors are being misled. When you build students up, they could potentially be the next architect that could turn the school into something greater by just learning more each and every day. Our garden takes years to grow, just like a student. So, when you give up on them, their spark dies out and all hope goes out the window. Always know what you have and try to change it for the better. Number five, if you really want kids to be successful, I propose that twice a month, we have an encouragement meeting with students that are not meeting the quota for school and the kids that are struggling with life outside of school. This method gives certain kids the right to voice their opinion on how to improve the school for them and their peers. Valuing the mental health of students improves the safety of the school overall, because they will be taught to deal with the stress in a positive way. Thank you for your time, and I hope you took in everything that I said, because the time to act is now. Please don’t give up on Baltimore City students, because we’re the future and we care about our well-being, and that’s what we are exhibiting to you today. Again, I am Damani Thomas, and have a great day.
Thank you. Okay. Damon, thank you for that really thoughtful testimony.
Thank you for having me.
Imagine coming face-to-face with a metal detector every single day. Each morning, you have to follow the same protocols used by the prison system. Your backpack is checked, your body searched, and you are sent on about your day. This is before first period has even started. As your day goes on, you start to normalize everything you take in. Kids who have to be forced into class, constant fights, teachers who are disrespected, bathrooms with broken stall doors and brown water that runs from the faucet, hallways that reek of old milk and are crawling with bugs, classrooms full of mice. These are not normal conditions that county kids might encounter. Here at Frederick Douglass High School, this is our reality. But school is hardly the most difficult thing we must handle. While dealing with the pressure of school, I have also had to deal with grieving my father’s death. This tragedy hit right before my junior year, which is one of the most important years for someone who wants to attend college. Under the best circumstances, it often feels impossible to cope with such a loss, but imagine doing it under the conditions I described. Unfortunately, grieving the loss of someone who is close to you while dealing with the pressures of school is sadly the case for many of my fellow peers. They have to survive violence in their outside community, along with problems inside of what is supposed to be a safe place for learning. Some of our students have to deal with homelessness, violence, addiction. It is our responsibility as a city to help bring solutions to these problems. Coming up with programs that will help these issues is fundamental in going forward with the improvement of the school. We come from greatness. We have notable alumni such as Thurgood Marshall and Lydely May Carroll Jackson. The alumni are strong believers that Douglas will be what it once was. We all have the potential to be the next doctors, lawyers, judges, engineers, and NFL players. We must instill it in our minds that we can persevere despite the conditions around us. For us teenagers, how we got to where we are now will continue to feel like a mystery, because we did not create these conditions that we must survive. But no good will come out of blaming the problem of one another. We must come together and raise awareness to create solutions to these problems. We come to high school to be prepared for college, the workforce, or the military. Sadly, the system has failed us at that already. Our schools are understaffed, we don’t have a variety of classes to choose from, and our computers and textbooks are the same ones some of our parents used. So many of the children in this city have given up on school, because they believe nothing will change. We deserve to have courses, materials, and teachers that will help us gain the tools we need to be successful. More funding is needed to create new community-based programs and to establish more career-related classes. Schools should be able to purchase new computers that won’t blackout during important tests or fun trips for us to go on college tours. This past February, one of our staff members was shot. Apparently, it was due to bullying of one of our students. Our safe haven was violated by a man who could not control his anger. They sent counselors to help us during that difficult time, yet, in part because of their presence, I have never felt so uncomfortable in my life. The response felt like it wasn’t genuine, that they were only here because of the incident, not to make lasting change. For this to work, counselors must be willing to take the time to get to know our school community. They must be willing to stay. Television news reporters couldn’t wait to get their hands on the story, another attempt to make Douglas look like the terrible school is believed to be. We are trying. Please don’t give up on us just yet. The new generation of Douglas students have the power to change these stereotypes. There is still so much that we must fix as a city. And yet, despite the fact that we have so many more advantages than before, we must be empowered to make the change for ourselves. The students at Frederick Douglass High School still suffer through so much, and yet, we still come to school, even with these heavy loads on our shoulders. Our world is so loud, sometimes it feels like we can’t even hear our own screams. Life becomes a constant fight. Eventually, we get so exhausted that we simply want to give up. So many students must survive real-life battlefields. They must deal with stresses that are sometimes life or death. Often, the battle bleeds over into schools. Children shouldn’t have to be afraid of schools. Schools should be a place where children escape from excessive violence that plagues our streets. It must be a break from the harsh realities we face every day. You cannot force someone to learn, but you can change the circumstances in which they learn. Better days will come. We will be all right. The kids are all right. Thank you for having me.
Again, thank you for that exceptional testimony.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jayana Santos, and I am in 11th grade at Frederick Douglass High School. The epidemic of crime and violence is just the cherry on top of a very unappreciated sundae for most students in Baltimore City. The streets we walk past are full of gangs, drugs, brutality, and other toxic circumstances. These are the neighborhoods we must pass by feeling out conscious with mine, with fear, and anxiety. But the society we live in forces us to disguise our fear with anger. Personally, it is frustrating to keep everything bottled up inside and not be able to express any of my emotions. How can we perform well in school with the many obstacles we come in contact with before school even begins? This is our reality. We can’t just focus on school responsibilities. We have obligations outside of school. Baltimore City students don’t have the luxury of only worrying about homework. We worry about things that seem so simple, like the safest route home, or how we can reduce our parents’ stress. Since 2012, I have been the primary caretaker for my father, who was diagnosed with diabetes, high blood pressure, and stage-five kidney failure. His health deteriorated while he was incarcerated. He was gone for most of my childhood. When he came home, I became his caretaker. At the time, I was only in the fifth grade. Since he is totally blind, he must rely on his family for support. I remember him telling me, “You are going to have to grow up today, quick.” As I progressed to middle school, the stress of growing up so quickly began to weigh on me. During the time, I attended Baltimore Design School. I fell behind in core classes, because it was easy to blend in with the childish behavior going on in the classrooms. Because of my composite scores, I ended up getting sent to Douglas. I remember when I opened the letter, I started crying. I was immediately worried about my safety. Deep down, I knew that I had done this to myself. At home, I had to be an adult. I never had time to be a child, so school became a place for me to play. I was not the only child who was in this predicament. All of this misbehavior led to constant fighting and disruption to our learning, but it was only the escape we had from the harsh reality we could not avoid at home. My personal role as the caretaker at home has made it challenging for me to be a regular student. Even as I matured and learned to focus on my education, it still isn’t easy. Instead of going home to study, I must look after my father. This has always been a hurdle that is difficult for me to jump. Although I love my father, this is a struggle that still deters me from being my best at times. Imagine going to a school where everyone on the exterior thinks you’ll never amount to anything. The stereotype is that we are simply not smart enough, or we don’t work hard enough. And now, honestly, going to Frederick Douglass has actually changed me for the better, regardless of our reputation. People who never stepped foot in Douglas judge from what they hear on the news and other outlets. What they fail to acknowledge is the greatness that has occurred and is continuously thriving at Frederick Douglass High School. Since I came to the school, I have been able to participate in programs such as MURC and the African Diaspora Alliance, which both taught me so much and helped me gain confidence in myself. I have grown close to my teachers, especially Ms. Klein, Ms. Mentos, and Mr. Parsons, who always show me authenticity and care. When you have a building full of students who are battling up their stress and trauma, you are born to have fights. People walk down the hallway with their defenses up, because they have to send a message to others not to cross them. We’re not supposed to show emotions. We’re supposed to seem tough. Crime and violence impact our lives constantly. Some students don’t make it to school because of the walk to the bus stop is too dangerous, or someone was shot near their usual stop. Sometimes, they have to put up with drunk or high people riding the bus with them. Overage men harass young girls on the way to school. We experience all of this before the first bell rings. Sometimes, I fantasize about what it would be like if we didn’t have so many struggles to overcome before getting to school. Would Baltimore City Schools’ test scores increase? Would fewer students die? Would City Schools have enough staff to meet the needs of each class? What if my fellow peers weren’t so desensitized by the constant crime and violence we witness? What if? Thank you.
Again, thank you for the exceptional testimony, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Parsons, and I’m an 11th grade teacher at Frederick Douglass High School. First, I’d like to thank the Public Safety and Education Committees for hosting this forum today and taking the time to listen to the students of Frederick Douglass High School. It’s so important. The combination of these two committees shows me that the council members truly understand that the issues of public safety do not exist in a vacuum. Addressing the issues that we face involves a whole-of-community-and-government approach to understanding and eliminating the conditions wherein crime and violence proliferate. Right now, we are failing to accomplish this. Right now, we’ve become the butt of the joke on late-night talk shows, nation ride. Right now, in the eyes of the nation, we’re a city whose leaders seek to enrich themselves, whose murder rate is spiraling out of control, whose police force tolerates renegades and robbers in their midst, whose schools are shams, whose wealth goes into the hands of developers who only reinvested in a few square miles around the harbor. Like a great deal of public sentiment, this is certainly an oversimplification, and it’s often perpetuated by those who want to see us fail. More importantly, it also overlooks the hard work and amazing commitment of so many who truly believe in this city. Even so, now is the time for bold action from City Hall to change both the perception and the reality. All it takes is care, and genuine care is a precious commodity these days. As you just saw this afternoon, the youth of our city deserve our absolute best. So, I won’t begin by telling you what it felt like to be stuck in a locked kill box of my classroom for over 40 minutes, as we waited for the sound of gunfire to echo down the hallway. I won’t try to explain what it felt like to barricade my classroom doors with metal cabinets and desks, or to hurry children behind my bookshelves, which we had to arrange like bunkers. How I had to calmly hand my teaching awards, the heaviest small objects in the room, to the athletes in my class, and explain that they should aim for the head if the door was breached. How I had to lead students in breathing exercises, so they did not collapse in panic. These actions are part of our new normal. No amount of description will substitute for what it felt like to transition from a relaxed Friday lesson, with the classmates discussing an MLK quote ironically, about how we begin to die when we refuse to stand up for justice, to that mental space, where I had to form a sudden and firm resolve to kill any human who threatened my kids. It was a moment where I knew that I must be willing to act or die trying. No one should have to go through this, especially our children. I also don’t need to explain the cause of our current predicament, or for that matter, the actual solution. At this point, we are all well-versed. If you don’t know, then I invite you to read the work of Dr. Lawrence Brown, Dr. K. Y. Whitehead, Ta-Nehisi Coates, Dee Watkins, and Kandwani Fidel. These are the voices we must turn to. At this point, it’s beyond academic. We know that reparations are the only responsible solution to the problem of the seeming intractable inequities in our city. As Dr. Joe Pettit from Morgan wrote on Monday in The Sun, “Black Americans are overwhelmingly denied educational opportunities by the governments that run public schools. The problem includes funding disparities, but is far more rooted in the despair and disorder that radiates from neighborhoods into classrooms, preventing necessary education from happening.” I hope that the future will bring us a leader with the courage to take action and build consensus on this front. Until then, everything we do is merely triage, and I fear that we will be back at this table confronting tragedy yet again. We waste a tremendous amount of energy working against teenagers in the city, seeing them as an entity that must be reined in and controlled. By doing so, we miss out on a real opportunity to unlock the tremendous energy and potential of the young in the city, who will define its future, whether we want them to or not. By harrying them constantly, both in the streets and in the classroom, we push them to drop out at alarming rates. We instill in them a sense of the permanent and perpetual failure that is tragically demoralizing even the most resilient of our students. This is part of the despair we see manifesting itself as violence in our streets, and we become culpable if we don’t act to change it. Our schools are the front lines for the emotional and intellectual battles our kids must fight. They are also the only place we get the children, under one roof, for several hours a day, 180 days a year. They ought to be transformational spaces for our young people. Instead, they tend to add to the trauma that they experience. We’re not equipped to handle the challenges that confront us. And before we too willingly accept the tired argument that the parents are to blame, please consider that a tremendous number of our students, and the students at schools like Frederick Douglass, have parents who are incarcerated or even deceased. Many are working multiple jobs and must rely on their older children to handle household responsibilities. Many of our young people have experienced traumas that would absolutely stun and immobilize even the strongest among us. Ask any teacher in the city, and they will gladly inform you. These traumas bleed into our lives, too. Currently, Douglas is treated as a de facto alternative school, without the necessary funding or support. Many of our students who end up there have seen several other high schools before they came. Fighting and being put out of a previous school was the most common route to ours. And yet, we’ve become a place where students can hit the reset button and find a new success. This fact hit home to me last year, when our former principal and I tried to help a student who was experiencing a placement crisis. She was in foster care and had bounced from group home to group home and from school to school. For her first three weeks at Douglas, she kept a firmly clenched jaw and balled-up fists. But she was a gifted writer, and she took a keen interest in the classroom library. Because of this, she was moved to AP classes, and gradually, over time, her fists unballed. She made friends. She began to find her place in school. She even bought ice cream for her classmates one day. But in the last weeks of the school year, she was kicked out of her group home. The day it happened, she was very sick with a terrible cold. The former principal and I spent over an hour trying to track down a DSS worker who would answer their phone. We were bounced from answering machine to answering machine, and since she had nowhere to go, she requested that she spend the night at her biological mother’s house. This is the last resort, since her mother struggled with addiction and her home had been deemed unsafe. With little option, the principal agreed to have her stay there. The next day, we became worried when we did not see her at school. We called all the numbers we had and got no response. I even called the hotline to report abuse and neglect and was told, “Sir, do you have any idea how many young people we have in foster care?” Our concern mounted when she did not appear on Monday. On Tuesday, a former student of mine, who also stayed in her group home, told me that she had been in the ER of the Sinai Pediatric Ward. After school, I rushed to see her. She’d been there for three days. A representative from her foster care agency, a woman she did not know and refused to talk to, stood watch. Gradually, she told me this story. After spending a fraught night at her mother’s, she decided she had no choice but to return to her foster home. When she returned, the conflict erupted with the person in charge of the group home. She was again put out. Carrying her suitcase with her, she spent a rainy night on the front porch of an abandoned house. At some point in the night, she chose to swallow a bottle of pills that she had taken from the top drawer of her dresser in her group home. Thankfully, she sent one last text to her mother. It said, “I love you.” Her mother was alarmed by this unexpected display of emotion and called the police. They found her in time to save her life. “Something is wrong with me,” she told, as she finished her story. In reality, there’s nothing wrong with her. She’s a gifted student with a bright future. There’s something wrong with the society that allows her to think that her struggle is her fault, with a society that tolerates the conditions where she must struggle like that. Despite her tragic home life, she was still one of our Despite her tragic home life, she was still one of our park passers last year and she sat for the AP language exam and almost passed it. And yet, when she needed the city the most, we let her down. By the end of the year, they transferred her to her fourth high school. I often wonder how many great futures we are losing to similar struggles. So what can we do to make a dent in the violence that plagues our school? Number one, we must find a way to, to deal with the role social media is playing in inciting violence. Currently, we are battling the law of accelerating returns. Our most violent days are Mondays because that is the day that students who have been shouting words online get to meet in, in person. Often, these encounters are filmed and go viral. Whenever that happens, the violence in our schools becomes part of someone's business model, placing millions of ad dollars in the pockets of companies while our students' minds and bodies pay the price. Choose any day to visit our school and you'd be hard pressed not to find an administrator, administrator running around the building, putting out fires that started online. This won't stop until pressure is applied to the companies to crack down on the violent content that is posted on their sites. I worry that until the day that a parent of a bullied or assaulted child can successfully sue one of these companies, we will continue to battle 21st century tools with 19th century administration models. We are currently losing this fight. Wealthy parents are, already understand the damage that is being done to the point that social media detoxification is becoming a status symbol of its own. We must staff our schools with trauma counselors at all grade levels. There should be enough in a given school that one can honestly manage their caseloads. Brain science has advanced to a stage where we now know that any of the money spent on addressing inequality are wasted if it does not address the key stressors that are impacting behavior. We must train all teachers to be trauma informed and provide incentives for teachers who have social work or counseling degrees in addition to their content proficiencies. We must also put our best educators in our roughest schools. Right now, the current teacher rating system punishes teachers who choose to teach in high need schools. This is a civil rights issue because it incentivizes highly qualified teachers to seek employment at schools that have smaller special education populations and more affluent, uh, students. We need to double the number of paraeducators and hall monitors to ensure safety in classrooms during transitions and ensure that they're all trained to handle and talk to traumatized youth. We should build a dorm for homeless students in the city and staff at twenty-four hours a day with medical professionals and mental health counselors and life skills coaches. We've got to update our buildings at a faster pace and replace the old technology and ensure that every school has the equipment and courses for training students for 21st century jobs. We gotta hire enough exterminators to keep them free from infestations. And finally, let's create a scholarship program for any student who graduates from Baltimore City High School who commits to attending college and coming back and teaching in the city for five years. I think these things will make a difference. Thank you for hearing from us today.
Thanks once again.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Kalandra Miller. I am also a staff member as well as a parent of a child in the Baltimore City Public School System. I am also a success story from Baltimore City Public School System. I've been able to see the changes and as you all hear today, our students are actually crying for our city to help, especially at Frederick Douglass High School. I have actually been at Frederick Douglass High School for several years and I've seen the changes. You heard our students before, they cried out talking about the community that they have to walk through to get to school, the challenges that they have to see before they hit the first bell at eight o'clock in the morning, the cry out for assistance, for funding. Even though the school has been where it is located on Falls Row, I'm sorry, on Gwen's Falls, the community has not changed. We have noticed that the city will, the city and the state gives funding and once we hit certain quotas, the money, funding is taken away from us. The community still has not changed. So we're asking for the city to listen to our students, listen to the parents and the staff and be able to assist us where is needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for opening in that way and just adding some nuance and some context. I think often when people think about our young people and the violence that you all experience, the story can be really simplified and these little clips that we see sometimes on the news or on social media and what they don't do is do justice like you all just did to the complexity of what you're facing, of what you're going through, of the resilience and adversity that you all experience, that you all have within you, um, just to show up at school every day. And so again, thank you so much for framing this hearing, uh, in such a, um, honest and, uh, just complicated way. And I think it's a message that this city really needs to hear. Um, with that, we're gonna start with agency testimony. Uh, again, for folks in the audience, feel free to, uh, send questions, live tweet questions, use the link above. Uh, we're gonna start by hearing from Commissioner Chinia as well as Chief Davis from Baltimore City Schools.
Is one of the agencies financed?
Is finance here? Finance is not here, Ms. Trueheart. We do have a representative from the mayor's office out with us. Ma'am.
Good afternoon and thank you Chairman Scott and Cohen and members of the Public Safety, Education, and Youth Committees. Uh, I'm Lynda Chinia. I am currently the Vice Chair of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners and I'm also joined by two of my colleagues today, Commissioner Muriel Berkeley and Commissioner Ronald McFadden. At first, I want to say that I am standing here feeling very proud of the testimony of the students from Baltimore City. And, um, as you just said, despite many of the things that may be impacting their lives, um, I think that what they have shown us in their testimony is that they have learned, they are smart, they are resilient, and we all do need to come together to work for them. As you know, and as you are hopefully are aware, the school board is the policy arm of the school system and sets the policy direction that the CEO, Dr. Santalisa's and her staff must implement. And please know that our school board has the utmost confidence in the work of our CEO as well as Chief Ham to implement those policies with fidelity. The topic you asked me to address today is around school safety and youth violence and I must first state that the issue of maintaining safety in Baltimore City Schools requires, as has been said earlier, the collective thought for solutions because what happens at home and in the community is oftentimes what is brought into the school building. To that end, in order to appropriately set policy, the school board regularly visits schools and we are supportive of the CEO and her team. We also hear from our stakeholders, the community, the students, the staff, about their needs so that we can do our best to address those needs in policy. School safety is not strictly about policing and arming school police. The issue of school safety is also about equipping students and staff with the appropriate behavioral supports and mental health tools to address the influences that may cause stress and harm to our students and staff. We are also concerned about the mental and behavioral health and therefore, the school board has an ad hoc budget committee that is monitoring the development of our budget right now and the upcoming school year budget proposal includes allocations to fund at least one full social worker for every school in Baltimore. The board also reviewed and approved the continuing actions to implement the CEO's blueprint for success. That blueprint looks at literacy, it looks at, um, leadership, and it looks at the whole child, the issues around mental health and, and, um, behavioral health. The proposed budget, budget also requires funding to be spent on school climate and restorative practices. As you know, the General Assembly has passed the first phase of Kerwin recommendations and has included funding for a health coordinator or nurse and a community school coordinator for schools. These are for schools that have eighty percent or more students living in poverty. But please know that long before Kerwin, City Schools established a policy for community schools to help deliver wraparound services to our students. And now, with the Kerwin legislation, we are, that helps us for the expansion of resources to schools impacted by concentrated poverty. The school board has also spent more than two years working with stakeholders on addressing school police policies and developing an appropriate framework around discipline and school police practices to ensure that school police are not involved in school discipline and that staff provide appropriate discipline based on an offense. We also work with city officials to ensure safe passage of our students to and from school. We know there are community threats and that our students must, that our students must deal with before they ever get to school and in many cases, traveling back home to their homes after school. After the tragic incident at Frederick Douglass High School, board members once again talk to as many people as possible with a priority on conversations with people who are in schools every day. And while there was not a consensus among any group, students, teachers, parents, or administrators, we heard about escalated and dangerous da, dangers from external threats. The board recognized and acknowledged a reality about those dangers to students, teachers, and administrators. We came to realize that we can fully be engaged in the work to become a restorative district and we can equip our school police with all their tools. Please know that when an incident occurs that is near a school, we must keep it out of our school building. And the vast majority of the time, it is an incident that is near a school, not inside a school or on school grounds. In those cases, the board is in regular communication with the CEO and depending on the issue with the mayor and the council president. Please know also that this board has been very clear about the direction that we want city schools to move and that is to become a restorative district that prioritizes de-escalation and does not criminalize our students. We want to make schools safe havens and as I said earlier, this must be a collective mission that the citizens of Baltimore must endorse. And there must be a concerted effort for city schools, city government, city police, school police, parents, community leaders, teachers, and students to work together for the betterment of our city and our students. Thank you again for this opportunity to address the committee today.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Chinia.
To address, I, I'm looking, but you don't want me to do anything with that right now.
No, so what I'm gonna do is have Chief Davis go and then, uh, committee members will ask questions of you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members, um, Chairmans Cohen and Scott. Thank you for this opportunity today to talk about this important subject. I do wanna start off by thanking the students that came today. They're very thoughtful. Yeah, we should give them another round of applause. They were very thoughtful and they spoke their truths, which I think is the truth of a lot of students and what they go through every single day. I would also like to thank the two staff members that came. Um, I think it's Ms. Miller and Mr. Parsons. When we talk about safety, um, when we talk about making sure our schools are the best places possible, yes, we have to focus on students, but we have a lot of adults that walk into our buildings as well and they have to be emotionally safe, they have to be mentally safe, they have to be ready to do their, to do their jobs every single day for the benefit of kids. Um, I'm really gonna talk about three different things and I think we're jumping ahead a little bit. Um, yep. Yeah, I don't think we have the right PowerPoint up. Yeah, this is it. That's fine. Um, so again, where I would like to start with this is to talk about the school and to talk about the work that we do inside the school. Commissioner Chinia talked about our blueprint and I've talked about how student wholeness is a really big part of it. Um, eventually, we're also gonna talk about emergency preparedness and emergency response as well. But any type of safety has to start with how students are interacting and how they're working within the classroom. You can see the, the vision for our student wholeness work, but I'm gonna elaborate a little bit on it because when it comes to adults, we have three hundred and fifty mental health clinicians that are in our schools every day. Every school has a combination of both psychologists and social workers. Some of our small schools, they may not be full time, but the vast majority of them are full time. Um, and through our student wholeness work, we always wanna be very supportive of the environment and really foster a place where academic, social, emotional, and physical needs are met. That is really the vision that we're always after, um, every single day and it's where the district has began to prioritize in the last couple of years under Dr. Santalisa's. Um, a few additional aspects about student wholeness is we started off with twenty schools that have student wholeness coordinators. We call them intensive learning sites and every one of those schools has a coordinator and has a room that is dedicated so that students can go to it if they're having issues. Um, the sites that I have visited, you end up seeing students, um, who figure that out on their own and don't have to be referred to an adult. And it really creates an environment where students' needs are met by a person that is there dedicated. So that's beyond the social worker, that's beyond the psychologist that's at the school. And again, they do a lot of work around social and emotional learning. We will continue that investment in our schools and we'll have an additional twenty schools and we wanna build that over the years so that those mental health supports increase. Um, you heard it from students, I mean, I feel like it was Damonte that said we have to value the mental health of students. And not only do we have three hundred and fifty mental health clinicians right now in the district, but for the next budget that was just released, every school will have a full-time social worker regardless of how large or how small the school is. Many of them have more than one. So again, these are the different investments.
Apologies, the number currently, you said three hundred and fifty?
Yes, and to break it out a little bit, I'm rounding up three just to be clear. There's about two hundred school social workers and a hundred and forty-seven school psychologists. Right? And that's currently. Next year, we'll make sure that even the schools that do not have a full-time social worker have a full-time one as well. From the work that happens in schools every single day, I wanna talk just for a second around emergency preparedness. And part of our commitment really is aligned to the school safety grant program. That's a statewide program where twenty-six schools received upgrades to both their interior and exterior door locks or school surveillance upgrades, right? And so again, this is the physical aspect that we know we need to do across the city and across our schools. We will have additional funding in FY twenty and we're figuring out what buildings and what schools will get that as well. Additionally, we always have a visitor management system that before students, or excuse me, before visitors enter, they go through, um, a scan, if you will, just to make sure that we're complying with some of the best practices in school safety. Uh, additionally, I wanna talk just a little bit about, um, our operations team. Like historically, there has been a disinvestment of our buildings that's up to one of the figures that I think is pretty accurate of three billion dollars. We have a new chief, her name is Dr. Lynette Washington. She's done a lot of work in this past year around ensuring that we know our schools, what ones need these school upgrades that have occurred through the school safety grant program, where schools are doing well, where we need to have additional investments. And really, that's been a year-long process that Dr. Washington has led and as her colleague, as the chief of schools, um, I just wanna highlight that because the infrastructure is very important so that people are physically safe. I also wanna talk a little bit about emergency preparedness that schools do ahead of time before anything actually happens. There are lockdown drills, there are reverse alert drills, fire drills, shelters in place. Every school, every year, has to create an emergency preparedness plan. Um, this past year, we also had, uh, school police trained administrators around an active shooter response. All of this has happened in the past, I would say, twelve months, but that emergency preparedness is something that schools have to do every year. Again, that's a constant thing, but in this upcoming budget, we've also put, um, additional funding so that we have an emergency management specialist that'll be working, uh, in our school's office. We'll be working with Chief Ham and myself just to make sure that all of this work that we're talking about right now is up to the absolute best practices and we're staying ahead of the game. Lastly, I wanna talk a little bit about our crisis teams and I wanna be very clear that this is a lot of work that happens behind the scenes and, and really, no one ever hears about this. I'll give an example literally from the last twenty-four hours without giving too many specifics, but a principal reached out because a couple of students were really struggling. And again, I don't wanna give- And again, I don't want to give identifying details, but there were huge struggles, and she put everyone on notice that she needed support. There are, there are a team of people that get called upon at least weekly, if not a few times a week, so that even though you heard of the people that are school-based, we rally people from central office and from additional schools to come to particular schools when we know there is a crisis that either has occurred or that may occur. So I know this morning, there were five additional, four or five additional social workers and psychologists that showed up at that high school to not only give support to the students, but because staff members knew that some students were struggling, they gave support to staff, because sometimes staff struggle with this as well. And so, you know, you can see the investment through social workers, psychologists, student wholeness specialists, but what I have to tell you is that when there is a crisis that either may occur or that has occurred, we rally a lot of people, and they can be counselors, they can be psychologists, they may be different clinicians, to really go to a school because we know maybe the two or three people that a particular school has isn't enough. Again, that is work that happens behind the scenes. Those, the related service providers, we sometimes call them, or mental health specialists, they don't always get shout-outs, and people don't know that they're crossing their own school and going to another one. But they do that quite often, and they get to know the situations that particular students are going through, and they help them out for a few days before they can really turn back to their normal academics. Again, I, I just want to point that out because people don't see that, you know, and I know that students may not have an initial relationship with stu-, with the mental health clinicians when they come, but they are an additional resource, and they are very positive. Administrators across the board thank them, and they thank us for really getting that support to their school in those times of need. And again, in times of crisis, and again, I think Commissioner Chinia did a great job of talking about this, we make sure that we are consulting with our leaders so that any type of support that they need, they need it right at that given time, no matter if it is something that we have to do on the school site, if we have to get people from other schools to come to an additional school, but we work very closely with the leader, and that R P really stands for restorative practices. We try to create circles by grade level or by class to, just to give either the adults or the students, usually the students, the opportunity to talk through their different situations and then to provide them help. And then, like I said, the staff circles and the restorative conversations with students sometimes end up resulting with students that need to go and see someone and need to get help for a few days to go through the situation that's either happened in the school, in the community, in their life, or whatever the situation may be. One of the things that I want to call out about this is, as you read more and more about ensuring people seek help, sometimes that's what we say, we say, "Students need to seek help," or "Adults need to seek help when they need it." These people, the, the clinicians and a lot of our staff members go farther than just saying people need to seek help. I mean, I personally witnessed staff members who are walking students, or frankly, some administrators who are walking their staff members to counselors and to employee assistant programs to say, "You need to talk to someone." It's not enough to say, "Go seek help." If you see someone that needs the help, it is our responsibility as leaders and adults to make sure that they get that help. And I'm just telling you that through the situations that occur in schools, some of them happen on the news, and some of them happen just behind the scenes, students and adults are a lot of times being walked to counselors and saying, "Get the help you need to get through whatever the situation that you is, that you are going through." And I say all that because, you know, by far, we can always do better as a school system, right? And, you know, as, you know, we will have a, a school board presentation as well as to some of the things we are thinking through, and that's going to come up, I think, at the end of April, if I'm not mistaken, April 23rd. We can always do better, and we always have to hear from the public and our elected officials, but at the same time, a lot of this work going behind the scenes, people don't know about. And I need for people to know that in times of crisis, people rally and help students as much as humanly possible across schools and across our district. And with that, I think Chief Hamm is going to speak first, or speak next.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
I think that's it. Good afternoon, Chairman Cohen, Chairman Scott, other distinguished members of the city council. What I'd like to talk about this evening with you are some of the things that we have been doing in the last two or three years to improve safety of the students, not only the students, but also the staff and visitors in city schools. And one thing I would say, and I would just piggyback off Mr. Davis and Commissioner Chinia, when I would say that what the young people came up here and said, that's what it's all about. It's all about having quality-connected relationships with young people. At the end of the day, our young people know what's going on, and if we can build those solid relationships with our young people, they will come to us and they will let us know, even if it's not the police, they can go to a principal, they can go to a teacher, whether they trust an adult in the school to say, "There's going to be an issue at Mar Diamond, there's going to be a fight downtown." If we can build those relationships where they feel like they trust us, and they can come to us, and they can tell us, I think that's a win for everybody. And I've, I've seen that happen on and on and on and on. Last two or three school years, we've gotten probably over 20 guns. And in those situations, there was little or no force in those situations where we got those. We just got a gun this past weekend, I'm not going to get into whatever the school was, but a young person came to an adult and said that a kid was on Instagram with a gun, and he took his parent's gun and was on there threatening, saying what he was going to do when he came to school, just this past Monday, and we were able to get that gun. Those are things that you don't hear, those are things that happen behind the scenes, those are things that we work very closely with the Baltimore Police Department because they were involved in that as well. So it's all about relationships when it comes to this. We've done a lot of reform in the last three years in terms of how we do our work. It went from a strong enforcement effort more to working in partnership with youth-led organizations such as Youth is Resources, The Algebra Project, other youth-led organizations, and how can we do our job better, how can we improve relationships that we have with students. Things that have come about through that have been a school police report card, which was developed by The Algebra Project and Youth is Resources, in which most of the students that took that survey in the 35 schools where we have officers permanently assigned, felt like we were respectful, we didn't treat them like criminals, and we contributed to the positive culture and climate in the school. So those are some of the things that we've, we've been doing. Also, in terms of training, we've done a deep dive in training as it, as respect to what we do around young people, and, you know, don't take it from me, you can check with the Maryland Center for School Safety, they will tell you that we're the most trained police officers that interact with kids every day in this state. Some of that training that we've had, holistic life, mindfulness, self-de-escalation, yoga, youth mental health first aid, trauma-informed care, restorative practices, which we do on a daily basis, understanding youth culture, also understanding the history of segregation in the city, which is very important for a lot of folks to know, whether you're African-American or not. I, I mean, I live in West Baltimore, I, I still live there, I live on Utah Street. My sons went to city schools, I grew up in the city, so it's, it's important for us to know what's going on. Also, in terms of understanding school climate, also nonviolent crisis intervention, which we need, and Copin Power, which is a grant that we were able to obtain. This is just some of the, this is evidence-based, this is not just what Chief Hamm is saying. You can see, 10 years ago, we were arresting almost 1,000 students, and we have 80,000 kids. We arrested, I think it says 47. My, my sight is not that good, but I think we arrested 40 kids. 10 years ago, we were arresting 1,000. So you see that instead of arresting kids for nonviolent minor offenses, we're doing more diversion, which increases the relationship with the police officers and the students because we're talking about mentoring, coaching, developing young people, working with young people, not arresting them, and we haven't arrested a student for disruptive behavior, disorderly conduct, or anything like that in the last three years. We have not had a complaint with the civilian review board with any student-police interaction in the last three years for excessive force, discourtesy, false arrest, or anything of that nature, which is something that you may not necessarily hear. And if you look at how we're being restorative, you can look at our surrounding jurisdictions and where we were last school year and where our surrounding jurisdictions were in terms of arresting students. This is not a Kehlham's information, this is information that you can get from MSD. This is not something that I'm just giving you. So in the survey, like I spoke to, spoke to earlier, the majority of the students that took the survey, and we're working on rolling the next one out this month, felt like we were respectful, we were approachable, and that's, that's what it comes down to. We can't discount how smart our young people can be. Our smart people are young, I mean, our, our young people are smart, and they want to be safe. And at the end of the day, they're going to tell us, if we have positive relationships, they're going to tell us if there's going to be an issue, or they're going to tell a responsible adult that they can trust. So we have to build on making our relationships strong, making a relationship the way that it needs to be, so that if in fact, we get information, we can act on it, we protect that anonymity, we don't tell, we just deal with the issue. And a lot of that comes from not only having that relationship with them, but also working with close community stakeholders like Safe Streets, who we work with very closely in Cherry Hill and, and, and other places in the city, and working with other stakeholders because, let's be honest, everybody doesn't trust the police. So sometimes when I get information, it's not always dealing with letting a police officer know. Sometimes I have to go to our community stakeholders and say, "Hey, we, there's going to be an issue, or we receive information, that something's going to happen," and I have to reach out to people that are not police. And that's just the reality of what we're dealing with every day. And so we're constantly having restorative circles. That's the way that I prefer that we resolve a lot of the issues that happen. And someone said it earlier, a lot of these fights, a lot of this stuff comes from social media, he say, she say, all over a boy. And a lot of times when we had a circle, the boy's never in the circle, even though he's the reason why we're dealing with whatever issue it is. And that's just the reality of it. And so we're continuing to meet with our youth organizations, and we don't have all our answers, but we're working with community stakeholders, we're looking at best practices around the country in terms of restorative practices and best practices of what we need to do. But honestly, what I can say is that I believe that our young people are smart, and they're smart enough to let us know. Now, are things going to happen that we have no control over? Yes, they're going to happen, but I believe that if we listen to our young people, then we'll be in a better place and more successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hamm. Committee members, before we go on to the other agencies, questions for Commissioner Chinia, Chief Davis, and Chief Hamm? Councilman Scott?
Thank you, and thank you, Chief Hamm, Chief Davis, Madam Commissioner. Couple of questions, actually, I'll go in reverse order. Chief Hamm, you might be the best person to answer this particular question. Out of, all of our school facilities have CCTV cameras, correct?
Not, not every one, but most of them do.
Do you know how many, don't we have roughly 180 schools? We know that's not the same amount.
It's about 120.
120?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but just to kind of piggyback on what you're saying, Councilman Scott, we did get a school safety grant from the state for $272,000 for us to do assessments on where we need cameras, doors, locks, things of that nature, which we will be working on this upcoming school year. And we're hiring actually an outside person to come in and do that assessment and look at everything, and what we need and what we, what we can do better in terms of that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Follow-up on that, because just visiting other cities and looking at how other cities' school system and their police work with the city police, does the, the gentlemen and women over at BPD at their city watch center, can they tap into all the camera systems at the school system?
That is something that we were working on several months ago, that didn't actually take place right, right as of now. However, we do have a very close working relationship with the Baltimore, not only the Baltimore Police Department, but also MTA police. And so every day at dismissal, we're in the police department's watch center, and we're able to communicate with interoperability on the radio, and we have, is, is actually a city police officer that works for Colonel Worley that's in the watch center, one of my officers and also an officer of MTA, and they can actually communicate. So even though, even though us and BPD are on the same radio frequency, MTA is not, but they're sitting at the table and they're able to communicate if there's an issue on the bus, if there's an issue at a school, if there's an issue at a major hub, we're able to communicate, and then our dispatch center is still able to tap into the cameras that they monitor 24 hours a day. And also, BPD at the watch center has access to their cameras. So to answer your question, no, they don't yet, but it's something that me and the CEO and the mayor have, has talked about, and that we do, we would like to do, but it's not actually in motion yet.
What, what would it take? Does it, do you have a dollar amount, or what would it take to make that? Because to me, that seems to something in 2019 that probably, I know you would believe that we should have that capability five, six years ago. So what's it going to take for us to be able to do that?
Well, well, actually, probably what it's going to take, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just being honest with you, you know, when you talk about school videos, they can be considered as educational records, and so that's something that our legal department will have to work out with the law department and the city police law department.
Right.
But it is something that we did talk about, and it's something that we did, that we did want to do several months ago, before it was a lot of transition.
Yep.
I just wanted to tack on really quick, just, and this is a procedural question, maybe for you, Chief, or Chief, which is, to my colleague's point, so with the cameras, just help me understand, because when I was a teacher about 10 years ago, part of the procedure to get into a school is you put, you go up to the thing, you push the little button, your face is supposed to be on the camera, they can identify you, and then you are buzzed in, right? That is supposed to be the procedure by which people enter our city schools?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. Because part of what I'm trying to understand is how a person with a firearm was able to get into Frederick Douglass High School and then use that firearm for malicious purposes?
While I can't get into detail because that's in the offices of State's Attorney, and they're prosecuting that case, so I can't get into specifics, but I, what I can say is that sometimes, and as you know, Councilman, we have a lot of aging buildings that are older buildings, more older than the rest of the state, some of our schools have at least 70 doors where someone can come in, and there has been- And there has been incidents in the past, uh, where someone has let someone that was an intruder into the building, or a door was propped open where someone could come in. I'm not getting into the specifics of that particular case because I don't want to impede or interfere with whatever State's Attorney Mosby's investigation is going to reveal. But I will say that with that many doors and with the lack of technology that we have that we're trying to obtain, it's very easy for someone to allow another person that should not be in the building to come in.
So Chief, is there a plan, uh, to my colleague's point, a dollar figure on how much of a technology build, how much it would take to secure, uh, to Chief Ham's point, all of the doors? Because we know many of our city schools are large buildings and have multiple ingress, egress points. Is this something that city schools is working toward, uh, to be able to solve this question around just wanting to make sure our schools are basically safe from intruders who come in with weapons?
And, and let me just say this, and Chief Davis will probably chime in. Again, earlier as I spoke, we got a grant from the state, uh, for two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars to do school safety assessments at every one of our school sites to look at our vulnerabilities in terms of doors, windows, locks, alarms, door buzzers that you spoke to, Councilman, earlier, to ensure that all of our sites, we can look at and say exactly what you said, what are our vulnerabilities at each site? Not just school sites, but North Avenue, other buildings that we have where students aren't. Um, and so that is in motion right now. We actually, I think last week, the state let us know that we were allowed that amount of money to get a contractor to come in and, and look at all our vulnerabilities, to see what our soft spots are and what we need to do. Now, now Chief Davis can, he may be able to chime in more, but that is something that is in motion, Councilman, to let you know.
I was going to say the same thing, right? The audit will give us all that information. I don't have an exact dollar figure. So that is in motion, as Chief Ham said. Um, but again, when we did get our first grant, one of the priorities was making sure that the exterior doors and interior doors at particular schools that we thought were needing the most were taken care of first. So the money that we get, you know, is always going to go towards that safety. Um, we did that before, and I feel like the audit will even give us more information.
Timeline on that audit. And the reason I want to sort of hone in is I'm hearing from a lot of parents, educators, that have some really deep questions and some fear about just the infrastructure of our buildings, as you all know, uh, and the state that they're in.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is why in the presentation I alluded to the three billion dollar disinvestment in this, right? This is part of it. Um, so if that's what you're hearing, I feel like we've been hearing that for decades now, and I just want to completely agree with it. Um, at the same time, right, it'll take a second to get a contractor in to visit all of the schools. Do I have a timeline? No, but the work should be progressing as we get into this year. Um, I don't, I don't have information of that contract, and it was a straight state grant, so we're working through it.
Chief, I would respectfully request, uh, within the next two weeks that you report back to this committee on timeline for when that audit's going to occur.
Happy to.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Clark?
Uh, your, your grant, I, I think that, um, it was two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, is that the grant, the audit? So that money's to pay somebody to go around and look at the schools, right?
Right, to assess the entire, uh, safety.
Physical plant?
Yes, the physical plant, the entire thing, for, you know, whatever it is, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety schools, yes.
And that, and then, and then they'll make recommendations, but they haven't funded, the state hasn't funded that yet?
That's correct.
Can I ask a question? What, I hope you won't think I'm start, starting from ground zero, but what is a chief of schools?
Great question.
What is that job?
Right, the, the principals have a principal supervisor, right? So principals report to a supervisor. That supervisor has about twelve or fifteen schools. That person, you know, is the person that goes around to those twelve or fifteen schools and supervises the principal and helps them out, supports them. They report to me. And so, uh, and, and so in the end, the principals end up reporting to me as the chief of schools. I also work with Chief Ham. Um, it's called the Schools Office in Baltimore City Public Schools, uh, along with some people in school operations, and also some of our academic folks that are helping teachers on an everyday basis.
It's almost like the police department. You wonder whether we should civilianize, get, get all those educated people back in the classroom.
Um, I taught in the city for ten years, so sometimes when I walk through the schools and I see a math classroom that I, that I'm ready to jump in.
Jump in, right?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, that's, okay, well, thank you. I, I never heard of that before. So you're in charge of all principals?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so Chief Ham is in charge of security?
That's right.
Okay.
And that's why we have to work very closely together. Because if something is happening, no matter if it's just a procedural thing or if it's something we need to take care of immediately, we're in constant contact. Like I said, the principal supervisors are right there as well.
They do a great job. I mean, I have kids that go to city, and it was school security that caught the suspects in that knifing. Um, they were there and they jumped out and caught them.
That's right.
So, I mean, they weren't fast enough to stop it, but they were fast enough to at least catch who did it or who was suspected of doing it. I, I, they do a great job, and we really appreciate them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so really, I have a sort of a combination of questions and data requests. Um, I'll start with the questions first. Uh, one of the things you mentioned, Chief Ham, was, uh, I believe it was you that mentioned that social media, the impact of social media, um, has on the school climate. And that's something I've heard from principals in my district as well, especially at the high school level, uh, that there's, you know, can be caught by surprise, um, with things that are happening in the neighborhood or happening online that then spill into, uh, into the school itself. Um, is your agency or if, and I guess the other relevant ones would be BCPS, how, how much monitoring is done of, uh, social media feeds or hashtags being used, um, by either your agency or, or BPD or whoever, if, if anyone is doing that?
Councilman, that's a good question. I think it's a combination. Um, most of the time, and, and that's why I keep going back to the kids. Most of the time when we get information, the kids, uh, will screenshot whatever's posted and send it to an adult. And that's how we get information on what's going on on social media. But also, in combination with the police department, uh, their watch under, under, uh, I think, is that under Conaway, Byron? Under Colonel Conaway, uh, they will, their analysts will send us information also. I think it was, uh, something at Douglas, was it, uh, Rich? Uh, they had guns down, hands up, that was circulating about Ma Donovan, uh, last week, where we coordinated with MTA police and the police department, uh, just to have a deploy, a small deployment there, just to ensure everybody was safe. Um, some, uh, an event that they had up there. But it's not only from just what we get from the kids, but also from the police department, because they have a social media unit that looks at that stuff all day long, and they will notify us and let us know.
Okay. Um, and is the, so that's, like, as long enforcement side, um, are, are individual schools, the, or maybe, I'm not sure if it's an appropriate question for you. I, I just, um, I just feel like this is something that, I guess that I've continued to hear. Um, and I would hope that there is, should sort of be a larger strategy around social media engagement and also, um, training for kids about sort of, I mean, a, a lot of online bullying does occur. Um, I, I'm not sure how much of that, you know, if there are incidents in a school, are students pulled in? Is there just general conversation being had with young people about social media, about online bullying, um, and the impact? I mean, we've, we've heard not only as it relates to violence, but there's been national news associated with this particular issue and, and, and the escalation of suicide rates among young people. Um, you know, and, and, and a lot of that is being driven by, you know, things that are on Snapchat and Instagram and Twitter, and I guess Facebook to a lesser extent. Um, so I would just want to throw it out there that I think it is something that should elevate a little bit, uh, because, I mean, I think you said it well. It's a, you know, twenty, well, one of the young people said it well. It's a twenty-first century problem, um, that we have to really step up.
And, and Councilman, I can, I can answer part of that. What I can say is that, uh, their cyber, the Baltimore Police Department Cyber Crimes Unit, we invite them into the schools to actually talk about this. Part of the larger problem we see with, uh, our young people is taking inappropriate pictures and sending them out, and then the school may disseminate, you know, other students may disseminate whatever inappropriate pictures they may take. We actually asked them to come in to our schools and talk to our students about that. They get into the, the bullying piece of it and the cyberbullying piece, but some of it is self-initiated. Um, and I'll never blame, you know, a person for doing that because they're young people, so they may not understand exactly what it is they may be doing. But we do have them to come in and teach those classes to our kids, not only during the school year, but also during summer bridge, where our incoming ninth graders come in for high school, and also during summer school. Uh, we have, uh, several summer camps, some of them that we partnered with Colonel Russell on, uh, where a lot of this is discussed. Um, now, on a large scale, I can't speak to, but I can tell you what I know and what we're doing is that we do ask them to come in and do, and teach those classes because their cyber, uh, their cyber crimes unit are the experts in all that stuff dealing with social media and, uh, you know, inappropriate stuff being sent on social media and all that kind of stuff.
Well, sorry.
To this, when, when, when it's my turn. But, you know, and part of me returning back to the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, one of the things we're going to really focus on is juvenile justice and this whole pipeline. And one of the things that I've been hearing from the community and since I've been back for ten days is about this, quite frankly, that a lot of the violence with our juveniles are, is starting online. And so I think, um, we can take some of the efforts of, of Chief Ham, but then also just make sure that as we're working on this continuum around juvenile justice, that those things, um, are addressed as preventative type of measures, um, as well as, as they manifest along that, um, continuum. So that's definitely something that our office will work with them to, to do.
Okay. And I, and I guess at future hearings, if we can get updates on how that's going, um, because like I said, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, I know is occurring. I even get a laugh every time I look at the social media feed for the school system itself, when there's like not a school cancellation related to snow and sort of the kids' responses to that. Uh, so it's clear that there's a lot of dialogue online, um, that is, is absolutely not related to snow, but more and more serious stuff that's going on. Um, it was also mentioned that there were twenty new schools designated wholeness-intensive sites. Uh, can you provide the committee the list of, uh, the schools that, um, are on, that are already selected, the next twenty in the pipeline? But really, the question I, I had, uh, one of the response to now was with the metrics for selection for those schools, what was used to decide where, where the, where you started that?
Um, one of the main things whenever you start an initiative in a school system is, and you start with twenty schools, you want the school body itself, the staff and the principal to sign up and say, we want to do this, right? So that's actually the first thing. We asked all schools if they want to do it or not. Now, everyone might say they want the resources, but if they're not ready to use it the right way, then we have to take that into consideration. Um, the other thing we wanted to make sure is that it was in the schools that needed it the most. And so you take a combination of things where we look at the schools that applied, and then also the schools that we think, uh, would use it successfully and where kids need it the most.
Okay. Um, so how, how do you define schools that need it the most?
You can look at things like suspensions across the district. Um, you can look at other factors. One of the things that we try to do in Baltimore City Public Schools is really take an equity lens. And we know different parts of the city have had less investment throughout the decades than other parts of the city. And you can tell that by a number of factors and a number of pieces of data. Um, and we take a look at what schools are in those areas, and those are the schools where we know that the students need it the most. Um, that's not to say that other students in other schools may not need it, but if you're going to have to start something and you want it to be really good, you're going to pick it in a place like that, that might be in an area where there is a food desert, where there's a lot of other social factors that play into it, that we know that there hasn't been investment in that neighborhood, in that area of town.
Okay. Um, the only red flag that stood out to me is the school self, self-identifying. I, I'm just going to go ahead and continue to mention this at these hearings, that, um, you know, you have some really good principals, a lot of really good principals in Baltimore City Schools, but I have schools in my district where I'm hearing from principals all the time. They're texting, they're calling, they're, they're, they're seeking resources, and there's some that I can't get on the phone with. I literally have to just go up there and talk to somebody. Uh, and this is coming from an elected official. Uh, and so it's pretty disappointing. And so I, I, you know, my only hesitation with self-identification of resources is that things continue to go to the schools that have the principals that are fighting hard for their schools. And you have some schools that are frankly not vibrant spaces for our young people, and, and the principals are not active and are not actively trying to seek those things out. Uh, and I've, I, I, my, I, I would wage that those particular schools are probably some of the most under-resourced. Um, and therefore, those kids would still end up on that list regardless of their, the sort of, and I appreciate the use of, of that lens, um, that's really important to hear. Uh, but my hesitation is that if you have a principal that's just not seeking assistance, and it's checked out, that those kids end up suffering.
Yeah, I, I'll say one other thing, and I think Commissioner Chinia wants to say something about this. Um, that's why also I work with principal supervisors. So if we know we need to push a school in that direction, we will do that, right? Um, and I, so yes, it's self-identification, identification, but it's not in a vacuum.
Okay.
I'm going to say ditto to that, thank you. And the reason I got up was, uh, as a part of our ad hoc budget committee today, we were actually, we actually asked that same question board members did. And, um, although the process may begin with some self-selection, as, uh, Chief Davis said, there's all, there's also the encouragement and support and maybe the nomination that comes from the principal supervisor. But also in the selection process, um, there is really, uh, a, a, a very determined look to be certain that we have a diversity of schools. And so when you see the list for this year, you're going to see a variety from alternative-type schools to special education centers, uh, to, from elementary to high.
Okay. Quickly on that point, uh, just to lift up both my colleague's point and Mr. Parsons' point as well. You know, I think what we often see, and Frederick Douglass is an exception because we know that Craig Rivers is one of the best principals in the city of Baltimore. But we do, what I have often seen is that we are not incentivizing our most experienced and talented staff to go to our most challenging schools. And I just think that's a ongoing challenge for the school system. I know we have the Hundred Percent Project led by, uh, Principal Martin, where you have principals going to some of the more challenging schools. But I just think continuing to push ourselves, to Councilman Burnett's point, um, around this question of equity, it, it, it has to be having resources deployed, um, in those schools and having talent deployed in those schools that really need it the most. Councilman?
Thank you. Um, so there was also, and again, this can be, uh, just a data request, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, was mentioned that there were, uh, the school system makes referrals, mental health referrals for students who've been identified as potentially been identified as potentially having some challenges in that area. Can you provide the committee the number of referrals made to mental health practitioners by school? We don't need any other self-identifying information. And really what I'm trying to get at is, again, this additional thought that, and what I, what I have experienced is that, again, you have some, some principals, some staff that are really aggressive at, at resourcing students and some that are not. So I think it would be helpful to see where you see a lot of referrals taking place in, in schools that there may not be.
Is that public information?
Yeah. I'll give an example, at a school, right, as a child is struggling, a teacher might make a referral to the social worker, right? And I don't know if all the time that is tracked and we have a record of. It is something we'll look into and we'll take a look at our staff that works with our related service providers, our psychologists and social workers. I can't commit to that just yet, but we'll see what we have.
Okay. And if it's obviously HIPAA protections would be first and foremost, but whatever level of data you can provide, even if it's a heat map by region or something, I think that'd be helpful. Finally, when the incident took place at Frederick Douglass, the next day I got a call from a community leader in my district whose sister is a teacher at Douglas. And this was sort of, it was a few days later and this was sort of in the, the middle of this very hotly debated discussion around arming school safety officers. And she described, you know, the fact that this teacher was called her terrified, crying from under a desk, not knowing what to do. And, you know, her solution, she, she was on the side of arming officers and wanted me to publicly support that. I have a difference in opinion in the effectiveness of that and so I did not. However, the thing that I, I said to her in that conversation was, the real challenge here is the fact that your sister did not know what to do. If, so if the teacher is unprepared to lead, and I, and I've, I've heard testimony earlier that it seemed like this may have been common, that, you know, everyone's trying to figure it out on the fly. And one of the things that we know about school safety and, and the, the history of school-based shootings is the schools that have the most preparation, whether those are locks or, or trained students and staff, you see a reduction in the casualty and the, and the student, the number of students that are harmed. When you read sort of these anecdotes in schools that have had, you know, Stoneman Douglas down in Florida, you know, again, similar stories of teachers not really showing, knowing what the protocol was or should be and how to handle that situation and, and that did result in the loss of life. And so for me, that was the most troubling part of the story, aside from the trauma that we've heard from the young people and the staff, was that they were also, that they were not prepared. Can you talk about the steps that have been taken, not only at Frederick Douglass, but how many schools have now, since this incident undergone emergency preparedness training or active shooter training? Would, and if you could provide that, you can give an anecdote, but I, I would like to know which schools have had this training, when in the last two fiscal years, and what the plan is moving forward, because we know that with training it needs to be reiterated. So if you could just talk broadly about the policy associated with that training.
And Councilman, to your point, we, the, the school police officers have been doing training alongside the police department under their SWAT unit probably for the last four or five years in Northeast Middle School, which is a vac, one of our vacant buildings, where we've been duly doing active shooter response training. What we've started to do this year is get staff, not only administrators, but also teachers trained in active shooter response and what do we, what will we do? I don't have a number in, in front of me now, but I can get it to you, but there has been ongoing training and I believe some of the staff may have even gotten statements coming on the weekends or doing it on Saturdays, but we have been doing training. Someone on my team has been doing training alongside the administrators and the teachers to get everybody trained so that we're all on the same page. And I can get you the number. I don't have it in front of me, but I can give, and I can tell you that it is ongoing and it's not just school police, school system, it's also BPD, because at the end of the day, they're probably going to be the ones that respond when something happens. They may get there before us because we're only permanently assigned to 35 schools out of 180. So we all have to make sure that we're on the same page when something happens.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to take two more quick questions because I know we need to move on to our other agencies, so partly from the audience, but I want to hone in on mental health because that's something that our students lifted up in their testimony, particularly, I think Brianna had mentioned about after the shooting at Frederick Douglass High School, there were some counselors deployed and psychologists deployed to Frederick Douglass, but it didn't necessarily feel connected or holistic or like there was a long-term relationship being built. And so, two questions. One is, in our schools where children experience the most persistent violence, do we not need more than one full-time school psychologist and/or counselor? Because having taught in Santown Winchester and in Curtis Bay, I know that the multitude of kids that experience high levels of trauma far exceeded the capacity of the single school social worker that we shared between our school and another school. Number two, this question from the audience is, what is city schools doing to ensure that support personnel, be it counselors, psychologists, behavioral specialists, are racially diverse, culturally competent and responsive and operate in a way that doesn't dehumanize the students that they work with? Because part of what I heard in the student testimony was, even though these folks were deployed, it wasn't sort of in the spirit of building a longer-term relationship. I also want to quickly acknowledge my colleague from the Ninth District, Councilman Bullock.
Sure.
Got it.
So the first question about more than one, right? When I testified that-
And just to be clear, more than one in those schools that, where we know kids experience persistent levels of violence?
Right. In, in the testimony, I said that there was going to be at least one moving forward. All schools have a psychologist or a social worker, but some of them are part-time, right? So we're making sure that there is a floor on the social worker. The vast majority of our schools, especially the ones that you're talking about, or a large school with many students, have way more than one mental health counselor. And so without a doubt, it's one of the balances that both as a district and an individual school leader faces. Many times when they get their budget and they have additional funds, this is what they put them to. Maybe it will be to a counselor, maybe it will be to a social worker, but again, the combination of what we're trying to put forward as a district and also school-level decisions usually mean that there is one. Could there be more? And I think, you know, respectfully, that's probably what you're getting at. Yes, there can always be more and I, I would always welcome that. I will always say that it's just a balance between making sure you have teachers and you have the right staff there, but, but that's the floor, especially in the schools that you're talking about.
Completely understand that we have a shortage of teachers in our schools, we have huge infrastructure challenges. We spoke earlier about cameras in buildings that are not up to snuff. I also think though, that in listening to some of our students, some of our teachers, some of our parents, that there is also this mental health crisis that many of our kids are facing. And so I would just say it, in all the conversations I have when I go to Patterson in my district, again and again and again, this question of trauma comes up and we know that if it is not directly addressed in a way that is culturally competent, that is thoughtful, that is sort of long-term, that it will persist throughout a child's life and cause big problems down the road. And so I don't know what the right number is, but I really hope that we're doing some analysis on the real health and mental health needs of our kids in city schools.
Right. You're not going to get a disagreement from city schools on this, right? That's why we have student wholeness specialists, that's why we're making sure we have a floor on social workers. We will always continue to add where we can add because we know that the need is great. To your second question, I think it had to do with some of the trainings that the social workers go to, especially when they're going to a crisis situation.
Are they racially, are, are the staff themselves racially diverse and then are the trainings-
Right. While I don't have that information handy, I know that, that office picks the best social workers and psychologists that have had a track record of success. I believe that they're racially and, and that they've gone through different trainings because I know that office does that, but I don't have a list off the top of my head and I can't completely answer that question. I do know that, you know, if we're going to, to, to call on someone to go to a school where a social worker doesn't know the students, right? You have to, we have to know our people so that we're only picking the ones that have a track record and have continually, when they've gone to different schools, been able to make those relationships and kind of guide students to the right choices they need to make during these types of crises. So I do have faith in that office and I also know that they go through a lot of trainings. So the ones that you talked about and probably a lot of additional ones that social workers and psychologists have to go through.
Chief, I would like, if you could, to report back some of that data to this committee at a later date and would also, again, just push to hear sort of a deeper analysis of the mental health needs within our schools that could be reported back to this committee. What is the right number? And part of this, to Ms. Trueheart's earlier point, is a budget question, right? Because it costs money. But I just want to know sort of what our thinking is as a system on what the right number is around school psychologists, social workers, et cetera? Because for a place like Patterson, for a school like Douglas where kids are experiencing pretty persistent trauma, it can't just be one.
I would say yes, and I also want to include some other titles that might come under that area. Counselors do some of that work as well as social workers and psychologists, so we, we can do that. But I, I wanted to just mention moving ahead because one of the items, one of the areas within the budget that is coming from the leadership piece of our blueprint is in recruiting and emphasis on recruiting more African-American staff, which would include teachers as well as social workers, counselors and those kinds of things. So there had, there is an effort and that started this year, but there is also an effort as we're moving forward in that area within the budget. So I just wanted to mention that also, as well as the fact that this year, as a part of some of the blueprint work, the system began some training along with the restorative practice training, training around cultural sensitivity and diversity.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we are going to move on. Councilman Scott?
Thank you. Chief Davis, do we have a, a policy or practice about where we work with or and refer students who have been the victim of, or maybe witnessed or have a family member been the victim of violence in the city and referring them to mental health and trauma clinicians in the system? How's that work? I'll just walk you through this scenario. I'm a, a freshman at Mervaux High School and over the weekend in my neighborhood or in my house, someone is a victim of a shooting. What happens when that young person comes back to school? And I, I want, I ask this while Colonel Russell and the Health Commissioner are still here as well, because this is an area where I think that we need a lot more of interaction with each other. So do we currently on the school side have a policy to deal with that?
So what I will tell you is, I see a lot of traffic between our school police and the Baltimore City Police when situations like that occur. And when they do, the immediate response is to get to the principal, to make sure that they alert their staff and take the appropriate needs on a school-level basis. So it is something that happens very instantaneously through good communication. And if I'm real honest about it, while there's a ton of stuff happening in schools, that communication between police departments happens a lot and Chief Hamm has a wonderful rapport with our principals, so he'll go directly to the principal and let them know of different situations.
Okay. Chief Hamm, I know that they communicate extensively, but a couple of things and a question. So there's no official policy or practice on how we do that? Like the, for every school, for every school leader, this is the response?
Councilman, if I could, if I could answer part of that question, we are looking at a program and we have been meeting with some city leaders about a Handle With Care, which is a program out of West Virginia where if something happens, it may not necessarily be a shooting, it may not necessarily be a homicide, it may be that the police raided someone's house. We don't get into specifics about whatever it is, but we will let the principal know that this child has been traumatized and you need to handle this child with care without getting into specifics. And that is something that we are looking at right now out of best practices with other cities that are using the program now.
And, and I thank you, and thank you, Chief. Colonel Russell, Madam Director, Madam Health Commissioner, I think this is an area where we all need to, to build in more, more coordination. I think that if I had my way, Madam Health Commissioner, you would be able to have trauma mental health clinicians that are based within the, in the police districts who respond out to these instances so that we can disseminate the information to the school systems, but also handle it on the, on the ground level. Because I think that we know that we're missing, we know within BPD that we don't do that, right? We, we don't have an official policy on how we're going to, if we go to a shooting scene and the father's been shot and the kids are there, we're not automatically putting them into these kind of NT services that we know that they need. And then what happens is, five years from now, guess what? That same, that young man is now shot or he shot somebody. So that we, we have to get a hold of that. And if that's a way, that is also a budgetary question and I guess later on, Doctor, I'll talk to you about how we can work with you to partner with them, but I think that we have to come up with a cohesive and comprehensive policy of how we're going to respond to that, especially when young people are, are witnessing and becoming the victims of violence.
Right. Another aspect to this, Councilmember, is that after that communication occurs, every school does have a student support team, right? We call them SSTs and you always have mental health clinicians on it, social workers, psychologists to figure out what the best avenue is and what to do. Sometimes it's because of attendance, sometimes it's because of everyday things and sometimes it is instantaneous that you have to get people together and do that. And that is a standard practice.
And again, this is an area for a future hearing, but this question around these responses, in addition to our schools, our rec centers as well, other spaces where young people interact and engage, because we know that some of the violence that occurs, while it may start in school, often trickles into community and into other spaces. Councilmember Clark?
Oh, I just wanted to follow up on what Chief Hamm was talking about, the, the West Virginia program of where, no matter what the trauma, a system has worked out where the school where affected children go is notified, little Susie, little Charlie, when they come to school, that there's been a trauma. But that basically, trauma, the whole, not that I'm an expert, I sometimes am a trauma for people, but basically, the whole, as I understand, the whole trauma response system is, should, in a system like ours, should be based on training in-school personnel in whatever theory the school system's going to adopt about proper responses to trauma that are, you know, have met the, the test of, of being tested and being proved to be effective. But that, and that would have to happen every year, but at least there would, after it began, you would have coverage in all the schools because you would train, they, the training would be to the school p, staff, not just a couple of them, but everybody. Something to do with professional days. And begin to learn how to do that through the staff in place and then renew those trainings every year, knowing that you're building a base of people who do know how to overall respond effectively, at least to help kids get through the, the worst of it until they can get some more help. But there's no reason it should be limited. It, it requires- It requires the school system to adopt its philosophy, its program, whatever it believes is the right way to go. Get some input from people that actually work in schools and know if that's effective. And then train the heck out of all the people in the schools that you can and keep renewing that and backing it up. And somehow, figure out how in a city like Baltimore, which I think is very possible, you can also do that West Virginia call to the school, hey, Charlie and Susie Q are coming in and they've had a trauma. I think a lot of people would be glad to get involved to help that whole system get together of the alerts. That's a neighborhood-based thing. And there are a lot of theories out there and they're trainable about trauma, at least as a first and immediate effective response. So, you know, I think a lot of people would be glad to get involved with the school system to help put all that together. So I hope that maybe you could carry the word back.
And Councilman Clark, to your point, what I would say is that some of the work that we're trying to get done, most of it, we are already doing. The police department lets us know, you know, if we have a non-fatal, a non-fatal shooting victim or a cutting victim or any kind of crime that happens, we get alerted. And once we find out from the police department who the victim is, if we know that it's a youth, if it's youth involved, and when I say youth, I don't mean just under 17. I mean, it could be a kid all the way up to the age of 21 because we have students that are 21. So when we find out that there's a victim and we get a name and we check it, which is, we do that right away, once we get it. And we will reach out to the principal and our related services folks who our related services have, the social workers and the school psychologists and all those mental health people. And they will send a crisis team to the school where it occurs. What we're trying to do now is streamline our communication, not just for a possible student that may be a victim of a violent crime, but a student whose parent, sibling, family member may be a victim of a crime so that we can get the appropriate wraparound services for that youth. Because as you know, a lot of things happen in the neighborhood that may not be a shooting, but may be traumatized to the child.
Well, eviction.
Exactly. And so that's what we're working on. But again, you know, and Colonel Russell is here, but it's been some turnover. So there's been, in the police department. So there's been ongoing conversations about this.
I think, I think you'd like to see that.
So I mean, it's something that we're still trying to streamline because it's going to take us together to work through this to get it done in terms of whether or not a child is traumatized in any kind of way.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, I'm not, I'm almost finished and then I have to excuse myself. I appreciate what you're saying. Until there's a sys, and still it gets focused down. So it's a real thing and not just what it also could be. Let's focus on the kids, the children and young people in a school. Just let's do that and figure out how to get that, the network you already have in place to work efficiently to make that, to make that referral to the right school or to, at least to, well, you've got all these principals that are overseeing principals. They must know how to do that. They could help. They must, there must be time that they could spend helping with that. And then get inside each school, though, so you don't have to always send a special team that doesn't know these kids. Get the local school trained so that when those children arrive, there's people they know who know how to help them right then. I mean, it's fine for me to say, but it's a big deal right now. It's what's being talked about in education and in society, trauma. Once you, if you don't fix it fast, a child will have it for the rest of his or her life. It will affect that child forever. And so it's huge. And so recruit me. I'll help, I'll help.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, there is a district-wide strategy on not only restorative practices, which is a part of that, but also trauma-informed care for staff.
Well, that's great. What we need to do is to put it in, the kind of language and action that people can relate to so they can help with this by joining the network that calls the schools. So if it's too generic, it means it's not doing anything. If it's real, it's down-to-earth, it's where people are and live and go to school. And it sounds to me like you've got a good thing going, real good.
Right. And again, if I could just back up to what I said earlier today, I think that in terms of, you know, I can't speak for all 10,000 employees of the school system.
Nobody speaks.
But when I, but what I can tell you is, we were arresting a thousand kids. I can tell you, my office has taken it seriously to the point where we went from arresting a thousand kids a year to about 47 kids this year. And a lot of that has to do with the policy that we've adopted in terms of how we treat young people and the training that we've undergone. And it's not just specific to school police, but I can tell you, under my shop, I can tell you, it's had a deep impact in terms of not having any complaints for anything. I mean, you tell me a police department that doesn't have any complaints and I'm just going, I'm just being honest with you. Adopting that policy as a district has helped us and helped me in my shop.
Chief, do appreciate a lot of the improvements that you've brought. I do actually believe there were a few, I believe three CRB complaints in the last couple of years. But I want to take it offline, appreciate the, definitely appreciate the drop in arrests. That is critically important. I do want to move on to our Health Commissioner, Dr. Girazza, who is new with us. And I thank you all for your testimony tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could just state your name and your new title.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Letitia Girazza and I am the Acting Health Commissioner for Baltimore City. Thank you, Chairman Cohen. Chairman Scott stepped away, but I appreciate Vice Chair Clark as well and Councilwoman Burnett, as well as Councilman Bullock. We're really thankful for this opportunity to discuss violence among our youth. We look forward to working with the city council as well as other agencies to better address these issues. In Baltimore, it's noted that about 30% of children, compared to 19% statewide, have had at least two incidences of an adverse childhood event such as domestic violence or being a victim or witness of neighborhood violence. As a lot of people, I think, on this committee as well as in this room have mentioned, exposure to trauma and violence has an enormous impact on health and wellness in the short and the long term. So when children are exposed to these chronic stressful events, their neurodevelopment can actually be disrupted and they may develop these negative coping mechanisms. They may see more harm-risk behaviors such as substance abuse or self-harming behaviors. Studies actually show that each adverse childhood event increases the likelihood of early initiation into illicit drug use by two to four times. And the rate of abuse of prescription drugs is increased by about 62% for every ACE exposure. As such, I strongly advocate for us to address youth trauma exposure head-on. The Health Department is really charged with protecting the health of all Baltimore City residents and this extends to violence and its impact on residents. The Adverse Childhood Event Study that I mentioned and that others have mentioned was performed in the 90s and it showed a linkage to that exposure to trauma, including violence on a wide range of health issues. These health issues include a prevalence of substance use disorder, mental health disorders, heart disease, cancer, headaches and chronic lung disease. Likewise, as I mentioned, we see a significant increase in high-risk health behaviors such as alcohol abuse, drug abuse, high-risk sexual behaviors and smoking. As such, I think it's the Health Department's responsibility to ensure the provision of preventative care and treatment to children that are exposed to violence and trauma. We must address the effects of violence and trauma on our youth as we would address any other risk factor that contributes to poor health outcomes for our residents now and in the future. A public health approach to trauma, meaning timely interventions, including counseling for victims and other impacted individuals, is the best means that we have to prevent long-term health issues in residents and stem intergenerational violence. At present, the Health Department provides training on trauma-informed care to government employees, including staff at school-based health centers, teachers and administrative officials. Trauma-informed care, as some have mentioned, is an evidence-based treatment framework that really involves understanding, recognizing and responding to the effects of all types of trauma. It is meant to help survivors rebuild a sense of control and refocuses them, refocuses survivors of trauma on a path towards healing. We at the Health Department believe that trauma trainings can better equip young people to handle the stress of traumatic experiences and positively impact the cycle of violence. We propose continued said trainings and we want to begin to examine more closely the effects of these trainings. We should begin to look at things like if there are fights that are being avoided as a result of these trainings, as well as beginning to attempt to measure the changes in attitudes and behavior toward violence as a result of our trainings. To date, we have a couple of programs out of our Office of Youth and Trauma Services that provide services to a lot of our schools. So right now, our team is currently providing weekly trainings to 40 youth at elementary, middle, alternative programs in East Baltimore. 15 teachers and staff have already been trained. We receive state and federal-funded grants to work with students through our Supporting Our Students program. To date, we've trained, we've reached 747 students with dating, education and mediation skills training during fiscal years 2018 and 2019. That particular program works in three-city high schools, Augusta Fells, Frederick Douglass and Renaissance High Schools. It utilizes a Safe Streets curriculum along with violence interrupters embedded within the schools to teach participants about building complementary schools, complementary skills, rather, and use to help them navigate peer conflicts that could potentially lead to violence. Another one of our programs, Supporting Male Survivors of Violence, has launched an innovative partnership with Tensh Childman Elementary Middle School to pilot in-school, an in-school program called SELF, which involves safety, emotions, loss and future. It promotes community conversations for students in an after-school basketball, young males program. Another one of our programs, Recast, out of West Baltimore, was started to really reduce the impact of trauma and build resilience in the central West Baltimore communities so that young people can complete school and engage in the workforce. That program has had over 1,300 youth that have participated in events related to community change through community-based participatory approaches that promote community and youth engagement, leadership development, improved governance and capacity building. A total of 1,684 people were trained on culturally-specific and developmentally-appropriate program services due to the Recast program. Likewise, we run the school health suites and school-based health centers in more than 200 city schools and those programs provide trained personnel who offer coordination with mental health and substance abuse services. So currently, the various programs above have outreach workers who are in the community every day and receive referrals from the state's attorney's office, city schools, as well as other partners to provide stabilization and mental health services to victims or witnesses of violence in their families. So these programs work hard to provide culturally-sensitive care to our students. The Health Department will be supportive of mandatory training for school staff and parents on the subject of trauma-informed care to better identify young people who've had traumatic experiences and ensure that they get the support that they need to heal. The mental health services are often covered by Medicaid, but we need skilled caseworkers who can encourage the utilization of those services. Additional funding is needed to properly staff outreach teams and ensure that young people have access to critical mental health treatment. So as I mentioned, I believe that it is essential for providers and educators to be able to identify when someone has been impacted by trauma and to feel equipped to steer them towards the most appropriate treatment. I believe the more widespread and universal the training is in our schools, the better we'll be able to properly address trauma as a crucial part of addressing youth violence in our city. And the better we'll be able to guide some of our most vulnerable and youngest residents on the path of healing and resilience. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss our efforts further and I look forward to answering your questions.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you. I think Chairman, you're handling those? Okay, good, all right. Thank you for the, that was very helpful information. Just, I had a really quick question and just for clarification, are you, did you, if I hear correctly, there's only been 50 teachers and staff district-wide trained in trauma-informed care?
That is what I've been told, yes.
How many teachers are there?
Hi, Greg Cilio, Assistant Commissioner for Crime and Disease Prevention. I also oversee the Office of Youth and Trauma Services. So that's just through the Health Department?
Through the Health Department.
I would assume that the school system also has other trainings, so the numbers, I'm sure, are much larger. But the Health Department, we've done, we've done public works, we've done other city departments. That's the number of teachers. It may actually be higher than that, but the school system's done much more.
Do we know what the total number is district-wide? Teachers and staff? I think it'd be helpful to know how many and by school? If we could add that to the list of data requests? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman Scott?
Yes, the total number of trained staff, total number of staff members, teachers and staff employed by Baltimore City Schools that are in schools. And then of them, how many have been trained in trauma-informed care? Either by the Health Department or by VCPS, other partners? And then that number by school? And how often? If they're working with kids, yeah, all staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Health Commissioner, thank you for being here tonight. A lot of questioning that I asked Chief Hamm earlier. Do you know how many, or first, let me backtrack. You guys, the police department does not directly partner with you right now as far as helping them assist young people or anyone for that matter who were witnesses or in a household where someone was the victim of a shooting or homicide right now. That doesn't exist.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Do you know, and maybe Mr. Cilio knows roughly, how much a mental health clinician or trauma clinician would cost the city of Baltimore for the Health Department? How much that position would be for us?
I mean, in a lot of cases, as was said in the testimony by Dr. Girazza, I mean, a lot of times you can bill it to Medicaid. So on our end, the hardest part is getting young people to actually engage in mental health services. It really is challenging. We actually had a partnership with BHSB where we used part of our contract to pay for the services directly and we came to learn that the hardest part was getting them to actually accept the help. But ultimately, if we can have case managers who can get them enrolled in Medicaid the way that they are eligible to be, then we can charge the services there. So paying for the clinicians probably isn't the best model. The best model is to get the kids enrolled in healthcare that's going to pay for it.
So, thank you for that. And just something that I have seen in Milwaukee and some other cities where, let's just say, this is 2008 and Chief Russell is a district commander in Eastern District, when he has throughout today, or there are two clinicians throughout today who are assigned to his district and if there is an incident of violence, right, that person responds out to the scene with his officers, with the detectives, and if they see that there are young people in the family or there are people in the family, they immediately start to try to push those folks in that director and try to start treating that portion of the trauma as soon as possible. Is that something that the Health Department will be interested in trying to bring to Baltimore? Because I think that we need to tackle it from all angles.
Yeah, I think we definitely would. I mean, I talked a little bit about a trauma-informed approach and some of that is creating what's called like a trauma-informed system, right? So everyone from the front door, when you walk into a school, up to the health suite, up to the classrooms, believe in a trauma-informed approach and have been trained on how to provide that for any student that comes into their classroom.
So thank you, Madam Commissioner. So thank you, Madam Commissioner. I think that's something that we'll follow up on. I would love to see how that will look, you know, even down to how much that will cost for us, even if we're going to pilot it first, but I think that it's something, there will be money well spent because we're not touching kids and families that we could be touching who are dealing with trauma simply because we have failed to show the leadership to build a system. Thank you.
And I'm going to layer on to that. Madam Commissioner, thank you for your testimony. We're excited to have you on board and excited that you are interested in this topic because I think there's a lot of work to be done. We talked about a trauma-informed system. I would love to see us be a trauma-informed city.
Absolutely.
So we think about other spaces, I mentioned earlier, rec centers. We know that often staff at our rec centers are not necessarily trauma-informed. We know that sometimes mental health can be stigmatized, and so there's a need for cultural sensitivity, there's a need for awareness. I think when we think about making ourselves more trauma-informed, absolutely within our school system, but would love to see, to my colleague's earlier point, our police, our Police Department, and I know we are making efforts in that direction, but also our rec centers, our parks staff even, I think there's a lot of opportunities to expand on sort of this framework and bring it into spaces that we're not necessarily thinking about that aren't just our schools, but that we, as a city, could do a lot more and a lot better for our kids.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm proud to say, you know, under Greg's leadership, we have trained over 2,500 city employees and stakeholders on providing trauma-informed care. So that includes maybe a bus driver or people who work throughout the city to provide that type of care. I think to someone else's point, though, it has to be continuous and ongoing, and it's really important to me, at least as a clinician, to make sure that we're also looking at outcomes, right? So as we're providing these trainings, are we seeing a change in behavior? Are we seeing a change in attitude of the students that are receiving the trainings?
And is that something you would be willing to extend beyond, again, into rec centers? And I, I know we're doing it in health suites within city schools, but I, I think there's a real appetite within our city right now, given just what we know our kids are experiencing on a day-to-day basis, to expand that training.
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, I think the schools, because you're kind of meeting students where they are and they do spend, you know, six to eight hours a day, feel like maybe the first place to start, but I think it could certainly be extended to other community venues.
I just, one of the things, one of the dynamics I know is that, you know, kids will leave school, go to the basketball court, go to the rec center, go to the pool, go to wherever, and if staff are not ready to receive them in a way that's sensitive and thoughtful and that incorporates and understands some of the experiences that they may have had, it can undo some of the work that's being done during school hours. And so I really think there's a need for a comprehensive approach. You know, we, we talk about restorative as something that we all want to encourage within our schools, but again, if it's not reinforced across our city, if we're not seeing our state's attorney and our Police Department and all these other institutions also behave in a way that is restorative, then that work in the schools can be quickly undermined. So I would just push us to think beyond just our schools.
Yeah, I would agree.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions? Alright.
I'll just chime in. I'm going to get you a list of trainings that we've done, because we actually have, some of the entities that you mentioned are either in process or we've already done, so I'll get you a list of what we've already accomplished, and then we can grow from there.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Chief, Chief Russell, you are up next, sir.
I am, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Co-Chair and distinguished councilors. I am ready. So, um...
If you start with your, sorry, your name.
I'm sorry, yeah, Melvin Russell. I serve as the Chief of the Community Collaboration Division for BPD. Actually, my colleague and great friend, Chief Hamm, has done a phenomenal job of presenting along with the Commissioner and the Chief, Davis, and so he's kind of stole all the thunder. He didn't steal all the thunder, but it just speaks to the collaboration that we have between BPD and the school police. The only few things that I probably want to add is when it comes to maybe diverting a lot of the kids, some of the things additionally we may have done, and then maybe just one or two that Chief Hamm really didn't have an avenue to get into it. Let me just say, first of all, we, we deal with some of our kids for diversion projects. You know, when kids get arrested, we have a single-woman army, Carlice Moss, and she deals with the kids through a diversion program, and 60% of them are diverted through something called teen court. And like, like Chief Hamm has also stated that his arrest away down, so is BPD. We don't make that many arrests on the juveniles anymore. We're basically into the preventive mode and diversions. As a matter of fact, teen court has complained, as well as some other service providers, because they're not getting the same traffic or referrals. And that's just because we're not touching as many through a criminal activity as we are on the front end through diversions. So one of the things that we're in partnership with, and I think everybody knows about the Explorers program, we're only in three high schools, but that program is just not there to deal with a select group of kids, but we really want to be a facilitator and a mentor for the entire student body, right? And so when kids need something, us working along with the school police, we want to make sure that the kids that we're training are also de-escalators. They are peer-to-peer mentors. So when they see other kids, and he already said eloquently, Chief Hamm already said, when they need help, they're going to come, right? So if they're not coming to the faculty, the student administration, not coming to the school police, they'll come to each other, and we've gotten to the point, at least in the three schools that we have, the Explorers, they'll come to those kids, and then we're able to come in along with Chief Hamm, or we'll just pass the buck to him oftentimes. Matter of fact, that's most of the time, and then we'll just deal with it so they can get those service providers. The other thing, we identify every year, and he's my biggest partner when we do this Away Camp, Love You to Life Camp for at-risk kids. And these are the most extreme at-risk kids. They are, they're in and out of the DJA system. They're, they're not attending school the way they should be. Grades are in the toilet if they are attending school. And so we're identifying, and our number-one entity that we're able to identify them through is the school police, along with the school board itself, and then some other community outreach organizations. And we're able to identify those kids and take them offline for an entire week without them knowing that we're law enforcement. When they're, they don't know we're Park and Recs, because that's one of our partners. They don't know we're clinicians. Department of Public Health actually is one of those partners. We don't even just, we don't even go into the kids. We are trained through Department of Public Health, as well as a couple of clinician and organizations, so we know how to deal with the kids. And we really, really picked that up after our first year of doing the camp, because the first year, we didn't get as much training, and we were in for a rude awakening, as we realized we might only have 50 kids, but a lot of them had a lot of serious mental health illnesses, as well as some other thing. And so where you thought you had 50 kids, it was really dealing like, dealing with 400 kids, right? And so that training really helped us, and things began to go smoothly. Again, the biggest partner with that is school police. They sit in the training with us, right? So not only the Department of Public Health, but we have some clinicians, we have John Hopkins, people come in and teach us about these mental health issues, social health issues, psychological issues, and they train us as much as they can so we can get a better feel and grip on the kids when they come in, and it's been extremely helpful. Not only do they train us for just like a half-a-day session, but they also come into the, the camp and they do workshops, trauma-informed care, trauma awareness, and that's been very successful. We didn't do that the first year, but we did that starting the second year, and you'd be amazed how powerful that was, because it's just not the kids sitting in this first workshop of the day to start off the week, but it's also all of us as councilors, because they just believe we're councilors. And because of that, ever since then, we've had kids open up where they would have never opened up. Those wonderful kids that spoke, there were issues like that that we were not aware of, right? So imagine you have a kid that said he was abandoned by his mother, and because she was abusing drugs, they had to take away from the mother, and she, he was being fed a bottle full of alcohol when he was a little baby. Or another mother who abandoned her, abandoned him, and he was adopted by his grandmother, and when he turned about five years old, his 16-year-old brother just sexually abused him until he got old enough to leave the house. And you have these stories after stories after stories, great trauma, and those are the light ones, but they would have never been able to open up and tell us about those things, except they didn't go through this trauma training with us and let them know that you're not anybody yourself, it's okay, pain is real, life is real, please share these things, and before the, the week is over, almost every last one of those children, them young people, are talking about their trauma. And then we're able to then wrap, do some wraparound services, and I'll, I'll just be real brief about this one. We had a young lady who, who was living with her boyfriend, I'm sorry, living with her mother and her mother's boyfriend, and her mother, because she didn't want to lose that paycheck, was allowing this, her boyfriend to have his way with this daughter. And, and the young lady had actually reported a few years earlier, but the mother made her recanted. And so there was actually a police report on file with BPD, and then they came back and recanted, so the case was closed. And she, because of this trauma training, receiving with us, and felt like she was uncomfortable, and he talked about building relationships with these young people, because that's what it takes. We build it fast and we build it hard with his staff and my staff and some other partners, and she was able to open up and say, I'm still in that situation, I recanted, I'm still afraid, I don't want to go back home. So even at camp, we had to get the case reopened, we had to go to the Department of Child Protective Services to tell them to pick up the case. They didn't want to do it, but then we made them do it. We took, we got her out of the home, and with her biological father, and got wraparound services for her, because she was struggling in school, because every day she had to go home to this, to this monster, right? So, so what I'm saying to you is, we've had, we have a really good working relationship. We really do. I, I love our working relationship. We're trying to expand on Explorers. We're, like he talked about, there's some turmoil internally, we won't get here, but we're talking to the chief, we're talking to Dr. Santalise, what would it look like if we really forged our partnership and went deeper and did the Explorers thing where we can get in more schools? More schools, not just with my staff, but with his staff, into a couple of schools, because again, these kids now become ambassadors, they become de-escalators, they become peer-to-peer mentors, as I mentioned earlier, and not only are they going in their school doing this, but they're going back in their communities. Imagine back in 2015 if we had these kids in place, right? And they were up at Mondo M. Mall, you would have a small army of kids would say, this is what we're not going to do, right? So these are some of the things we're doing. We've got a lot, a lot of work to do. It's really a staffing issue for him, it's a staff, staff issue for me, and then it's resources. So we're happy where we are, but there's a whole lot more that we have to do.
How widespread is that training? Is it agency-wide?
No, so, so although there's some portions of that training that's going agency-wide, and I believe, I'm pretty sure with the Commissioner coming in, he's looking at stuff like that to be part of the new recruits training and in-service, but that's a question for the Commissioner. But I, basically, basically, I grabbed that training from my division, because I knew we were dealing with youth, and I want to make sure my officers were well-trained, and then I got permission from him, if your officers were sitting on the training, and they were already better trained than we were around these issues, and he said, sure, they can sit in this training. So they got a little bit more training, we've got training for the first time, and it just equipped us better to deal with these young people. So it's been real isolated to my division, but that's been the whole kind of purpose of that, hopefully we're training the trainers, and if we ever get to the place where you get those officers to get out into the district and help train those other officers in those districts to help them better cope with the young people. One of the things that I'm, I'm talking to the Commissioner about now is, what would it look like, because a lot of our officers aren't engaged, and it, that's a variety of reasons why that's not, and he understands that, and he's coming up with ways to do that, and, and I'm talking to him about, what would it look like if, if we became those officers? If I got a school on my post, right? If, I mean, if I work in, if I work in Northeast Baltimore, Mervaux's on my post, how come I'm not going to Mervaux for 15, 20 minutes at least once a week, just saying hello? Going to the administration offices and say, you know what, where would you like me to go today? Cafeteria or class? Is there a class you're struggling with? Let me go in and talk to some of the kids. I know I can't stay long, because I still have calls to answer, but that begins to build a relationship with that school, and then I'm back on the street. But if you keep doing that repetitively, all of a sudden, that becomes the officer-friendly for that community, for that school. And if you did that citywide, then you have these officers who didn't take a whole lot of time out of their time, but just that little bit of planting seeds, you're helping him with a force multiplier, because you heard him already say, he's only got enough police officers to go in 35 schools out of 180. We got police officers across the entire city. So what if those post officers were able to do that on day work, just pop in and out of the schools periodically? So now these kids come back to the community, and they say, oh, man, I remember you from the, from the school, and all of a sudden, you have a relationship building, going back to what he said. We're building relational equity between our youth and our police, and that's, when you build that, you've got trust coming back and forth.
And Chief, just before I go to my colleague, Councilman Scott, you know, it strikes me that, that training sounds really wonderful and in-depth. You know, all of your officers, all of our officers have the potential to interact with young people who are experiencing trauma on any given day, right? I mean, whether you're walking foot on post, whatever it is, and so it just seems like there is a deep need for every city officer to go through something like that and have that kind of experience, so that they can then be in a position to effectively interact with our young people, as you and Chief Hamm so often do.
Yeah, if, if I could just add, so hopefully that becomes the case. But one of the ways, because from my lane, I can only do what's in my lane, and by being a community collaborating chief, I was able to build out the chaplaincy. You guys know chaplaincy, you know, we've gone from seven to over 200, and so they go through an academy, never had academy for them, and part of their academy training is around trauma-informed care, and, and all the things you would think they would need. So the wonder of it is, now they're getting in the cars with police officers that maybe don't know how to engage properly, but they have an expert, subject matter expert in the car now, that can help them engage, and some police officers will tell you, it's been priceless, it's been invaluable to them to have a chaplain with them when they get out into a situation where they're a little confused about, but you have someone who has the training. Not only they're a spiritual advisor, but they're also, more importantly, they're, they're a trauma-informed advisor, they're kept, they're, all these things, that's in their tool belt, and they get to utilize them, and officers have literally turned over the call to them when it was, when it was appropriate to them, and they've de-escalated, and the officers get back in this car, and all of a sudden, the car becomes a, a classroom because they're asking questions, how'd you do that, so forth and so on. So the chaplaincy is really good to help also push that training out in a non-conventional way to some of the officers across the city.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Scott?
Thank you. And Chief, this is, this is actually not a question, but just something I want to uplift and remind my colleagues of, that the department also has this continuing youth dialogue training with the Baltimore City Mediation Center, where we're doing 500 youth and officers a year. I know that Chief Hamm, his folks have been, have been doing them as well, so this is another way that they're touching our young people in a different way, and actually, from reviewing what was coming out of the youth dialogue sessions, it's actually been very beneficial to the officers, and even some of the officers that work in City Hall now have been through it and said it's one of the best trainings that they've been through.
That's good. I, I did feel the same. Our police officers are now getting extensive training and de-escalation through the academy and, as well as in-service training, and, and Councilman reminded me, Scott, that they are also getting, they're doing mediations with mostly being piloted in the Northeast District, so they're doing focus groups over in both, in, with the mediation group. The mediation, it's, it's a private sector, but they are actually identifying the kids from Northeast Baltimore, and they're bringing the police and the kids together for these sessions.
Thank you, sir.
You're so welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Ma'am, you are last, but not least, Ms. Ganisha Martin, joining us at the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairs and other distinguished members of the council. Just to follow up on two things that, questions that you asked of Chief Russell, one of the reports that I'm going to get into actually mentions some training that I brought in when I was at the Police Department, is called, was put on by Strategies for Youth, and what they actually are experts in is not only training police officers on how to deal with youth as it relates to their cognitive development, so just because you see a child that looks a certain age does not mean that that's where their brain is, number one, and then number two, also, you have to take into consideration that a lot of our youth are coming from environments where they have been dealing with violence, they have been dealing with post-traumatic stress, and so just because they're loud and just because they're angry, it does not mean that they are meaning to be disrespectful to authority or to request, but rather, there is a way to de-escalate that and actually deal with, with them where they are. That, that training was not implemented, but it was mentioned in a report that was just released, it was commissioned under the consent decree, where they, they had to take a look at all of the gaps in the diversion programs in the city. That was just released, I think, on April 1st. That work will be transitioning to my office, and I'm very happy about that. I'm very familiar with the work since I did it under the consent decree. And then also, my primary reason actually for coming back to the city was because of the juvenile justice issue and conversation, and I felt very compelled to make sure that we could use the convening power of the Mayor's Office to bring together the disparate conversations, the disparate programs, so that they could actually serve our youth. And one of the things that that report actually showed was that there's quite a bit of gaps in the diversion program. Chief Russell mentioned Carlice, who was somebody that I brought over to the Police Department, simply because the program was being defunded because it was not, um, you know, up to, up to snuff. And so I'm very excited to come back at this time um, because that, that report is going to be a great roadmap, uh, to the work that I'm trying to accomplish. It will be a, a piece of the, the larger pie. Um, and just to give you some context, um, the way that I'm looking at this whole pipeline of dealing with, um, these issues that you brought us here today with. And by the way, I thank you guys, uh, for this forum to actually bring this conversation, bring all the stakeholders into the room. I just met with the Health Commissioner yesterday so that we could talk about how we could work together to get some of these things done. And as you can tell, she's completely, uh, dedicated to trauma-informed, uh, programming, uh, and policies. Um, so the way that I'm looking at this continuum is you have programs like ROKA, um, who are here. I know you had specific questions about them. They're, they're here to answer those if necessary. But ROKA on, on this end, where, you know, you have youth that are committing some of the most violent crimes in our city, um, that many people have just kind of given up on. Um, and they have a, a, a way to address that. And then you take, you go all the way down the continuum from those who are doing carjackings without guns, um, over here to those who are doing assaults. And then what we're hearing in the community, um, when I'm talking to folks, is that you have the youth that are starting to rummage through cars, take people's cell phones, do things of that nature. And how do we get those and start hanging around people they shouldn't hang around? How do we take that cohort and start working with them so before they get over here? Um, to, to, to folks that need to serve them from ROKA? And, um, the undergirding to that is, are the service providers. You all asked several questions tonight about referrals. I think we need to not only find out about those referrals, but we need to find out what those service providers are actually doing for our youth. Um, their outcomes, uh, recidivism rates, are they meeting our youth where they need, um, uh, to be met? So one of the things that I want to do, um, I'm gathering right now, and I'm sure this, um, distinguished council could be helpful in this regard, is, um, a list of all of the service providers for youth. Um, and then I want to take that list and do an analysis to see who they're serving, what population they're serving, and, and the success rates. To make sure that as we go through this pipeline of the youth that I mentioned earlier, that they're actually getting the services that they need. And take that and use the convening power of the Mayor's Office to ensure that all stakeholders that are touching our youth along that continuum are meeting and talking. Um, and those gaps that were mentioned in that report are being filled. Um, the other thing I think is important and I, and I hope that you all continue to look at, is that often, it's the media, it's the community, it's all the stakeholders, it's politicians who start here with the homicide rate. And we really never talk and elevate the conversation about the environment that caused that young person to pick up a gun. They were not born violent. Um, and so I, I think, yes, that number is very important, but these conversations should be focused on what caused them to get there and how we can stop them from getting, you know, down that continuum. And so that's going to be, uh, my focus. You know, I've been here for about, I think, eleven days. Um, but you can trust and believe that moving forward, that's going to be, um, one of my main focuses in my work. Um, the last thing that I'll say is, um, that we're, um, piloting a, um, a program with DJS um, as it relates to youth. And, and like I said, I think we have a lot of programs that need to get on the right page with youth that have, um, committed violent acts. But for the ones who, um, that are in the rec centers, um, the ones that, um, are very close to entering into that pipeline, what do we do? And so, um, and talking to a community member who, who said that the community members see, um, these activities before, um, the police do. Um, and trying to avoid police having to engage with, uh, youth under circumstances that probably would not be the best for either party. Um, bringing in, uh, community-based stakeholders to talk to community members about how to help, um, youth. So we're building those capacities in our community. So I wanted to just stand here and give you an overview of what I'm planning to do. I do have, um, my Deputy Director, Tyrone Roper, here who has more information on the programs that are already in place, if you would care to hear that. Um, but I also know that we're standing in the way of hearing from the community members. So, uh, I'll leave that to the pleasure of the, the council.
Um, thank you, ma'am. Uh, looking forward to your leadership. And I think what, part of what we've heard tonight and part of what I think is one of the driving dynamics in our city is that there's a ton of work happening in different spaces, but often it is siloed. And it is not happening in partnership and with clarity. And there are different stakeholders and different organizations.
Absolutely.
One of the things we've been talking about is, uh, and I know that Mayor Young is considering bringing back an Office of Children and Families or Children and Youth. Uh, we've talked, Ms. Trueheart and I, about having some sort of task force. Because again, we hear all these different services and agencies, but it seems like the conversation happens in isolation. And one thing I hope to come out of this hearing is that we have some deep coordination between your office, the Health Department, which sounds like has already started, our school system, uh, and, and all of the stakeholders because we all have to be in it together for our kids. Um, and I think our young people framed it up really well, which is that on the ground, they're not experiencing these services. They're, they're experiencing the trauma, but not all of us working together to heal it.
Well, and they even spoke to the quality. And that's one of the things that I, you know, they said. And, and you've kind of, you know, talked about that, that the providers that we're sending to them are not servicing them. And then that actually adds to their trauma, um, when the people that are coming to help are not actually helpful. So, um, I, I've heard about that, uh, the, the Mayor's, uh, plan. Um, and I, I fully, fully support it. I think it's very much needed in the city. And I think, uh, the city would applaud those efforts. Um, the residents would applaud those efforts.
Councilmember Burnett.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, submit another data request. Uh, the total list of Baltimore City Public School, uh, service providers, uh, and outcomes, that they provide mental health services. Is that what you're looking for? Uh, 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 outcome data and recidivism data? For service providers that you have partnered with, uh, to provide mental health referrals to.
Do you mean service providers as students who refer from Mervaux? And remember, one of our staff includes providers that come under the IDA around the students with special needs. And some of those providers are lumped into that. So do you want that, that, or do you want referrals for mental health?
I think all of above would be helpful. All, everything that you've, you've mentioned would be helpful. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Um, all right. So just as a next step from this hearing, and I, I also want to get to public testimony. Um, could we commit to having the agencies, uh, engage, meet together in some form or fashion and sort of tighten some of the connectivity, uh, with our school system, with our Health Commission? Um, and Director Martin, is that something we could, uh, task you with starting to convene?
Absolutely. Not a problem.
Does that work for you, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And Chief? Great. And Chief? Thank you.
Are you having these every month or quarterly or?
I think we're going to have these, we, we have our next hearing on May second. It's related to youth employment, but I think we can reschedule another one of these sometime fairly soon. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, um, public testimony, uh, I have a list here. Um, and I know that some folks have had to leave, but, um, is Blake Masile here, followed by Andrea Cole, followed by John Dingzone, followed by Keon Johnson, followed by Nick, um, and I apologize, I'm going to butcher the name, Coffin Navong, um, followed by Melissa Shober. And apologies. Before you go, please state your name and, um, who you are. Before we do that, I just want to also submit for the record that, uh, some of the questions that were asked, we're going to send a list of those to the appropriate agency. Um, and if you could submit a written response, would very much appreciate it as well. Uh, because there were a number of folks that submitted questions online uh, and would love to get some responses to those as well. Does that work? Nice.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Blake Masile. Is this concerning the question I posted online?
Uh, you've got three minutes.
I didn't click testimony. I would actually like to use this time to identify. We actually have a representative from the Baltimore Teachers Union. Um, I would actually much rather hear what she has to say than anything coming out of my mouth.
Sounds great.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, we got our signals crossed. I was a little bit late. I thought you had requested that someone be here to speak about the task force.
We, we did. I, I wasn't clear whether, uh, you were, we were going to speak, but if you'd like to give a quick update.
Very, very brief?
Please.
Okay. Um, we started the task force in November of two thousand eighteen. And if I'm not mistaken, you were there. We originally had about sixty persons who came. We divided everyone up into five groups. Once the, once everyone kind of led to, they gave us a indication as to where their strengths were. We had, um, stakeholders from Baltimore City Public Schools, School Police, Mayor's Office, City Council, Pizzaza, Avsmi Cub. And the groups that they end up dividing into were the Code of Conduct, the School Culture and Climate, Training for Teachers and PSRP's and Community Partners. This Friday, actually on the twelfth, we'll be having our final meeting. And those persons will be putting together their presentations for the next me, meeting, which will be in May. Once we have heard the presentations, then we will start taking our show on the road.
I'm looking forward to seeing you on Friday.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Nine o'clock.
I will be there. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Shober.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Shober. I'm a parent of a fifth grader in city public schools.
Hi, Melissa.
One more time?
Try again.
Uh, my name is Melissa Shober. I'm the parent of a fifth grader in Baltimore City Public Schools. Um, and although I'm not particularly fond of Ronald Reagan, um, he brought us Trust But Verify. And I think that's an important and interesting concept here this evening. So, um, we heard earlier about community schools. Community school policy was adopted by Baltimore City Schools in October twenty sixteen as policy, ADHRA. Um, and it says that the assessment of community schools will include an evaluation of each school's evidence-based systemic school climate and safety program. If you're wondering where that assessment is, I am too. I was the parent rep on the Community Schools Steering Committee briefly prior to my daughter suffering a stroke and moving to a new building that did not have a community school coordinator. Um, unfortunately, the responsibility for community schools, which are supposed to be the locus where community come together and we help break down these silos, passed in policy. And then, as we see all too often, from this body and other bodies, um, we called it done when the policy went to paper. That Community Schools Steering Committee was supposed to meet quarterly. They met in twenty seventeen and then they failed to meet for an entire year and are currently a violation of their own bylaws, adopted. We farm that responsibility out to the local management board, the family league, who suffered their own set of serious leadership problems. And so today, even though standards for community schools are supposed to have been adopted already, there are none. There are no standards. This is a best practice nationally. I work on this professionally for a living and have for approaching twenty years. And the fact that we do not do this in Baltimore City and leverage these funds is unacceptable. So why aren't we leveraging this? Especially because we demand that students cross what we know to be an unsafe city on unreliable public transit every single day just to get to high-quality programming? Because if you look at a map of where those high-quality programs exist, they are predominantly in where I live, the White L. And so we put students as young as eleven years old on a bus to attend advanced academics. And we demand that they show up on time and we ignore their trauma. And we don't do community schools because we call policies done. So I'm sure that this appears disjointed and that I am angry, and that is true. Because in hearing the young people speak earlier tonight from Douglas, I feel disappointed in the leadership of this body and indeed the school system and in myself. It is unacceptable. It is unacceptable that this body has traditionally used the excuse, city schools is not a city agency, to ignore the fact that this body appropriates two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars to the city schools and then largely ask no questions about where that money is going, nor does Annapolis, because city schools exist in a regulatory hole. It is not a city agency and it is not a state agency. We ignore the fact that new members are appointed to the city school board in a process that violated the Open Meetings Act. And I am happy to share the opinion with anyone in this room who would like to see it because I'm the complainant. This is what goes on in this city. This is what happens with people sitting in this room. And no one is called to account for it. It just rolls along. And as a parent of a child with special needs who just went through the middle school choice process, I would like to announce to you that no one in this room should be surprised in the least that we have declining enrollment in city schools. Particularly when the twenty-two-member enrollment task force is made up of a majority-white task force from the same nonprofits that we see in this room and at the school board every single year, holding out the same buzzword-filled answers, although they have the solutions and sunshine signs only on them and their program that they are all tumbling to license and sell to you. That is ridiculous. There are a number of evidence-based programs that are free in the open sector. There are the child and need, city, uh, child assessment needs. There is an entire Maryland center at the University of Maryland blocks away whose mission it is to provide technical assistance. And the fact that parents feel and students feel like we are shouting at the wind for all of you and for people at North Avenue, year after year, week after week, is unacceptable. I look forward to some real answers. I look forward to some real breaking down of silos in the coming weeks and years and months. But you'll excuse me if I have very little faith that that is actually going to come to be, particularly on the backs of the testimony of teachers and students at Douglas who have experienced more trauma than I could imagine. And it is unacceptable and shameful and embarrassing that this is the way in which we treat the young people in this city, although we have a budget line that says that they are our future. Are they or aren't they? Make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Shober. Um, Chief, where are we on the Community Schools Task Force? Uh, to Ms. Shober's testimony?
Task force-wise, I'm not sure. I do know that when I go into schools and they're the community school coordinator and also with, um, and also with their partner, because they're always well-engaged in this school. So there were point about the task force and, uh, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Um, but at the same time, I do know that the community schools, that our community schools are working with a partner and do have a, a coordinator that is well, um, well-versed within the student.
So.
Can you please speak into a mic that we can hear you from? I'm sorry. Do we have Matt? Thank you.
So one of the things you mentioned. Yeah, apologies. Do you redo the response for?
To the task force, I'm not sure about their standing or the.
Steering committee.
Steering committee or the family league or what that situation is. What I'm going to tell you that when I'm in schools and when there are coordinators there, when it's a community school, that there's, there's always a partner. Um, I can think of Elevate. I can think of a few others when I go into a school that they are always working very closely with the school to bring additional resources and to coordinate different things for the family beyond the classroom. So the factual steering committee, I'm unsure about.
Okay. Uh, and I know, Councilman, Councilmember Burnett, you're on that steering committee? Is that right?
I, we have not met.
Okay. Uh, so my understanding is that it has not met in quite a long time. I also understand that, um, to your point, while several of our schools do have partner organizations, I actually don't know that all of our community schools do have a full-time community school coordinator. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of them actually don't.
Hmm, I've never heard that and hmm, that's never been elevated to me. I mean, that's something, again, that we can look up and find out.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Shanee?
Uh, currently, um, not all have a full-time coordinator. However, if you recall, I mentioned the Kerwin legislation, uh, which, which is going to be, um, expanding, uh, community schools within our district. And we're, we're one of the districts that's getting a great deal from that because of the concentrated poverty. So any of our schools that have eighty percent poverty rate or higher will, uh, we are, will be mandated to fund a full-time community school coordinator as well as, um, a health person, either mental health, I think, and or nurse. Um, but that, that, those will be two funded positions from the Kerwin legislation.
Okay.
Some of those will be the current schools, which means that if they're currently not full-time, they will become full-time. And some of those, because of the eighty percent, uh, will include some new schools.
Um, I actually went and testified this year in Annapolis in support of a bill to sort of define based on national best. I actually went and testified this year in Annapolis in support of a bill to sort of define, based on national best standards, what a community school, what some of the legal definition should be. And I think part of what prompted that bill is that we know that actually there is variance, great variance, in quality. Some have, you mentioned Elevate, really robust partnerships and staff. Others simply do not. And so, I guess the suggestion, the ask that I would make, in addition to all of the other data questions, is when will the next steering committee meeting take place?
I will, that we can take back in terms of the steering committee itself. I will tell you from the, from the perspective of the board, that that is a concern that the board also has, and so I know that we will have some additional discussions around the standards for community school. I will also say that a part of the current legislation is, is mandating accountability, and so I am quite certain that there will be additional discussions around what that is going to mean as we are having to report about the success of, of the use of these dollars.
To Ms. Shober's point, really quickly, community schools, I think, pose a potentially great model for Baltimore, and this is a strategy that I know many of our partners really embrace in this city. But it does feel, from my perspective, with two and a half-plus years on council, like, to an extent, the strategy has stalled, that we're not making the kind of progress that perhaps we should be. And I do recognize that this is part of Dr. Santalisis's vision and that it is very much within her blueprint, but I don't see the kind of acceleration within city schools that I would hope for and expect, just given that, to Ms. Shober's point, it's a national best practice. We just hosted the National Community Schools Gathering here in Baltimore. This is something that I think our city has really embraced, that we as a council fought for funding to, to maintain and expand community schools, and it does not feel like, over at least my two and a half years, we are really accelerating the strategy.
I, I would agree with you in terms of the frustration of, of that. And again, as I said, there's, this is additional legislation that was also passed around helping to define community schools in terms of that consistency. And as I said, this is a priority in terms of, of the board. Once the policy was adopted, that does not end. We need to then implement policy with fidelity, and that, and one of the concerns that we do have, as well as Dr. Santalisis', is how do we define effectiveness and quality? And, and as we expand, and that means we're going to be hiring community school coordinators, you know, what will that job description entail, and, and what, what will we say is, is the type of quality that we need? And it is a perfect way for us to do just what we're saying tonight, coordinate the agencies, because these are wraparound services, to really coordinate the city agencies around these schools. The only downside is, it's not all of our schools, but it will, it will meet, begin to meet the needs of, of our schools that are in the areas of concentrated poverty.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, would just request that, as a data point, would love to know when the next steering committee meeting is. Councilmember Dorsey.
Put that on our list.
So, let me just, for clarification, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually have community school coordinators, but we don't have a clearly-defined definition or understanding of what our expectations are of them.
We have, we, yes, we have community school coordinators. We have a general description of, these are persons that coordinate those services that are within, within a school. We, we understand that there's a partnership between funds from the, from the system and the city and other partners. What we do not have is a clear definition of what effectiveness should be as to how we will evaluate those community schools.
And you said in your previous comments that this is a priority of the board. It's a serious concern of the board, and you said, I believe, the board will have further discussions about this. Can you provide to me, like, where I would find in the minutes of the school board meetings where this has been previously discussed as to, like, substantiate the idea that we would have further conversations as opposed to not just, like, we'll start having conversations now that this issue has been raised here, like, actually show that there have been active conversations going on about this within the board? Do you, like, does the board...
I know that board minutes are recorded, and I, and I know that just as recent as this week, there, in, in terms of the executive session, there was some discussion. I would have to go back to look to see how, where to compile those, but I, if that's what you're requesting, I will ask, I will make that request. But I don't know that we've, that, that, I can't tell you an exact date when it was on, in a public meeting where, you know, that was televised. That is, but that, as I said, the televised versus, you know, the board does have two sessions.
Can, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a request that the school board provide to the committee within the next two weeks all, all records related to the conversations or minutes, the, the board, you know, from the board having discussed this matter around the, um, standards and annual reporting, the policy related to this, for, I mean, for community schools coordinators and defining this, and the adopting of standards that are long overdue.
Okay, I think, I think, I think what I was saying is that we do not have standards in terms of the evaluation of the effectiveness of, of community schools.
All right, well, let me clarify.
So, with, yeah, so is that, if you're asking... Future discussion?
No. In your previous statement, you said that this is a concern for the board, and we will continue to have further discussions.
Yes.
The implication in such a statement is that the board has actually discussed this at some time in recent past, and that this conversation that we're having right now is not the launchpad for conversations to begin, that they have. I would like all information, all records, all minutes related to the board's discussion of this matter over the last, whatever, two years, because it seems like that's how long it's been stalled and not being developed, and no, no progress, as far as we can tell, in developing even a definition for what we are spending money on in terms of what the function of a community school coordinator is.
I believe the policy has the definition in terms of what we mean by community schools.
A set of expectations.
That, that was passed. And again, I think we also need to follow up to see what's happened with the steering committee, which I, we are not the lead for, to my knowledge, but we, but I will, we will get that information for you, and we'll, we'll look to see where our minutes reflect discussions. I will say to you, given the legislation that has passed, given the timing when we will be expecting those funds, which would impact our budget and, and the upcoming school year, which does begin July first, that we will have to put in place some criteria in order to, to even implement that legislation.
Councilmember Dorsey?
I think I've made my request.
Okay.
If we could get that within the next two weeks, ideally, and in addition, just part of, again, what I hear from schools is that there, there's some pretty significant questions around implementation, fidelity, whether or not they actually do have a full-time employee, employee, whether there is an actual coordinator. Again, I've heard in some of our better community schools, there is not just one, but multiple coordinators or staff. There's a fully-robust partnership, but then in others, there is not a full-time employee or a robust set of partnerships. And so, I think having that criteria nailed down and re-engaging city schools' steering committee, because I do see community schools as being at the nexus of student well-being, community health, and really part of an anti-violence strategy in our city, and one that just, I think, we as a council and you as a school board must embrace.
I agree. I, I simply just need to be certain that, that everyone is clear that even, even with the additional funds that we're receiving, there is, there's a criteria as to the number of schools that will be impacted. Now, it will be, it will be more than we have now, but it will not be, for example, where we, where we've indicated in the budget that there is funding for a social worker in every school, that is not, you know, that's not a guarantee that we can say with these funds around the expansion of community schools. But yes, I do agree in terms of what you're saying, Councilman.
Understand. And part of this is budgetary. Part of this is the city and Annapolis, but I think part of this, what, to me, is salient about community schools is it is a community-defined strategy. And to Melissa's earlier point, if the community-based steering committee isn't meeting, then we're probably not moving this thing forward.
We'll move to get that tied.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kim Trueheart? Followed by, Joe, you, Mr. Kane, no, Ms. Kane. Anyone else who would like to testify from the public, following Ms. Trueheart?
Kim Trueheart, resident, born here, educated here, at one of the best high schools in the country, Western. Okay. This says school safety. We, we got all over the map here. But we have to acknowledge that the definition of safety has also been all over the map and has not been focused on the issue at hand. And I'd like for us to have a good definition of what school safety is, because for a long time, we talked exclusively about these things that fire lethal bullets. And now I hope we've moved beyond that, such that we can have a true dialogue around making schools safe, welcoming places for our children. Okay, so we've touched on a lot of things today, which I think is helpful. But, but we really need to focus on what makes a child feel safe, to get up every morning, walk into the building, learn, right, feel productive, feel valued, right? The social-emotional needs of our children is critical to them feeling safe. The physical plant is also important. You know, they see the farce of us calling a school a safe place, but yet the windows don't lock, the doors don't lock, right? Nobody's monitoring the cameras, because we don't have adequate staff. So, they know that we truly have not invested in their safety. You heard it. So, I hope that we will begin to have a true and honest dialogue about what makes schools safe for our children and staff, because they're not there yet. And will it take investments? Absolutely. I am horrified and appalled. My sixth-grade teacher would love to hear me say that, because she used to use that all the time. Horrified and appalled from Ms. Lanier at Mary E. Rodman Elementary School that the city contribution in the general fund to Baltimore City Schools is the exact same amount as last year. It sucks. Got to do better. And then the city's budget, preliminary budget write-up about schools says, it's almost like it's bragging that the ninety million dollars of gap funding that the city put up, because we, like, demanded it, ends this year. And it, it was almost like a celebration in the write-up, in the preliminary budget document. I was offended by that, because, because what I would have loved to have seen in that budget document was, while we only agreed to fund it for three years, right, this gap funding, we know it's important to continue into the future, as opposed to the celebratory words that I saw. Let's talk about the school board. I have asked that the school board composition be augmented with a health practitioner, a professional, who has a understanding of trauma, who understands the role that trauma-informed care can have in this thing we call the academic space, and that when the board is considering policies and procedures and guidelines, that there is somebody sitting at the table who can interject into the decision-making some level of understanding around trauma, such that we're, we're not putting policies in place that will induce trauma, that is sensitive to the impact on our children's welfare. So, I'm hopeful that whatever it's gonna take to get that done, that it happens this summer, because from what I understand, we will have two vacancies this summer on the school board. And guess who gets to fill those? The mayor of Baltimore City gets to fill vacancies on the school board. I, I think we know who that is. I would like to think that y'all gonna help me influence the mayor of Baltimore to appoint someone from the health profession who is well-informed on childhood development, adverse childhood experiences, and trauma, to inform their decision-making. Okay. There, it currently, and my question earlier about finance being here in the room, there today, at this very moment, is thirty-three million dollars of surplus money floating around this building somewhere. And the rumor is that all of it, almost all of it, is going to the police department. You can't imagine how much that offends me. And I'd like to think everybody else in this room is offended also, that the surplus from 2019 is going almost all to the police department. We, we gonna retard that, right? We gonna stop that. We gonna ensure that some of that money goes to our children and their development. And one of the ways that I'd like to see that is by, hopefully, our mayor standing up a task force, which is a joint task force, with the mayor and the city council co-chairing a task force on youth engagement. Has everybody in this room, since I've been here for hours now, talked about how they want to support our children? And it's this silo got this, and this other one got that one, and this over here. Nobody knows what they doing to the babies. Why can't we get together? Why can't we come together and identify what our babies' needs are, right? We want to hear from them what those needs are first and foremost. And then let's put a comprehensive plan together for this summer. Let's start there, right? So, this task force will bring together all the stakeholders, all the people in this city who profess to love our children, and let's work on a summer strategy. Because I don't know that we've ever done something like that. And I think our children deserve it. We gotta stop playing games with them. We gotta stop playing games with them, you know? There's this rumor that somebody used our babies to sell some books. Stop using our babies, because they deserve a whole lot better. And as far as I'm concerned, this task force needs to be stood up by the 30th of April, because we're gonna meet the first week in May, and we're gonna come up with a friggin' comprehensive summer strategy, an emergency strategy. And guess where we're gonna get the funding for it? We got a $33 friggin' million surplus. I think that is a wonderful place to grab some money, to support our babies, for an emergency summer strategy. 15,000 children in this city applied for summer jobs, 15,000. Every one of them deserves an opportunity to work for five weeks and get paid, and we're gonna figure it out, starting the first week of May. Councilman Cohen, I beg you, charter this task force however you can, from the city council perspective, okay? I'll keep working under mayor's office, but we need a strategy, and we need funding. And I'd like some initial seed money of $1.2 million to come from the $33 million surplus. I got, every time I say that, it gets me. $33 million of funding that we're so willing to give to the police department, and not willing to give a dime to our children. Change the priorities, get it straight now. Since January, four young people have been killed by gun violence in this city. Nine of them, these are teenagers, nine have been shot, non-fatal shootings, right? Of those, there were kids on playgrounds, there were kids on basketball courts. They go to those places, and where are we? How come we don't have organized stuff at the playground where the two kids got shot? Or at the basketball court? We're telling them, "Come to us." "No, come on, let's go to them. We're gonna figure this out." The summer strategy is on. We're gonna come up with it, we're gonna figure it out, and we're gonna do something meaningful. All this bullcrap that went on in here today is crazy, foolish discussion about nothing. Now, y'all telling me y'all want a strategy on community schools? Uh-uh. Every school needs to have its own metrics, because every school is different. Every population in every corner of this city is different. Yeah, yeah, it is city tax dollars, and we have some accountability, but I want to set the targets in my community, based on what my community's needs are. And if it really is a community school, ain't that the way it's supposed to work? I don't need a prescription from North Avenue, right? I know what the kids at Liberty need. We know that. The principal and the community work together to identify goals and objectives for the person we hire, and oh, by the way, and if they don't do it, we fire them. Something y'all don't do. But we fire people who don't meet our expectations in operating our community school. Let the communities have a voice. Listen to the children for a change. Thank you for the hearing, I appreciate it. First time I heard our new health commissioner, I like her. She's saying the right things, okay? We gotta get her engaged, get her around the city, to see what the problems are up close, but she's saying the right stuff.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public testimony? All right. Mr. Joe Kane.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, councilmembers, for being here.
Pull it up, Joe.
Pull it up. So, my name is Joseph Kane, I'm a father of four children here in Baltimore City Schools. I went to Northern High School back in the day, so I didn't go to Western, right? But I really wanted to just point out that this year, the issue of public safety has been really divisive inside of our schools, and I think, no matter what side of the issue you fall on, whether to put more gun in school or not, the underlying issue, everybody was really concerned about, how do we make our schools safe? And I think that I really applaud this committee, this effort to take leadership and bringing people together on both sides, on all sides of the issue, to really say, how do we make our schools safe? Because I think, at the end of the day, the people like Chief Hamm and his officers are doing the best they can with what they have. I think parents and community members are really trying to figure out where they fit into the picture, and I think you all are doing the same thing, trying to figure out what leadership role you could take in answering these hard questions. So, I just would have really affirmed the work here, and really practice you all continue bringing everyone into the room to really solve this issue of safety in our schools, or how do we keep our schools safe? So, I thank you all.
Thank you, Joe. Other members of the public? All right, well, then, on that affirming note, we will be-
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Dorsey?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to make a more detailed request than, a clearer request than I stated before, and just, I'd like for the school system and the board to expect a follow-up from me pretty shortly, and I'll transmit that with the chair and the staff of the committee as well.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, we have several questions from committee members, as well as from the audience, that we will be sending your way. I would appreciate a timely response. Again, want to thank everybody for participating in what is not an easy conversation around the safety of our kids and of our schools. Do appreciate Commissioner Shanier and Commissioner McNair for being here as well. Thank you to all agencies who came. This committee is now in recess. Our next committee, in the Education Youth Committee, is May 2nd. Thank you so much.